I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 6th, 2022. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Starkweather.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett is absent.
Is traveling. They didn't have, they didn't have any Zoom on the airplane.
Oh, you think these, these days they would.
Okay, next is our Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Murphy, if you'd lead us, please.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is selection of new Chair and Vice Chair for the Planning Commission, and our absent member, Lucas.
We, okay, so this is the first item in terms of voting for Mayor, I'm sorry, not Mayor. Chair and Vice Chair.
Chair and Vice Chair.
However, one of the Commissioners has asked for this item to be continued so that they are present for, for the voting for, for the Chair Vice Chair.
And because it's an agenda item, if we're going to continue it, I think it takes a motion, a second, and a roll call.
I'll move to continue it.
Second.
To a date certain?
Uh, next meeting.
Next meeting, July 20th. Any discussion? John?
Oh, I'm in agreement.
Fine, okay, then let's have the roll call, Sherry.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Starkweather.
Yes.
Okay. Next is Public Communications. Time set aside for items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. We'll try to hold it to three minutes because I think we're gonna have a lot of comment on things that are coming up here. But I do have one card for Public Communications, Bill Miley. Sir, would you like to step up?
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. Seniors are having trouble in Ojai. A lot of them are being pushed out of their rentals because of rent prices are going up. This call came yesterday in the help of Ojai Newsletter. It's a crisis. And it was described in very human terms. I hope most of you read that, and if you haven't, you should get on their email list. So, years ago, about 20 years ago, the City Council voted to put a measure on the November ballot for citizens or voters in Ojai, City of Ojai, to advise the City Council on whether they should pass the bond issue, put a bond issue in the measure, to buy and develop 50 senior units on two acres right next to Whispering Oaks as part of the deal that the Conder, the people who own the Conder storehouses, or whatever you call them, they wanted to add more. And so, the deal was, they would set aside two acres for senior housing, and they would get their additional Conder storage units. And it passed. Voters said, yes, go ahead, City Council, put the bond thing. And it never happened, for whatever reasons. And the two acres are still there. If you look at Google Earth, it's really nice. It's all green, it's hooked right next to Whispering Oaks, and it has an access from Bryant Street. This is a crisis. This is an opportunity that we will lose because I understand the Conder people would like that agreement to be withdrawn, and they would like to put more condo storage units on that property. And if they do, it's gone forever. So, there's some of us who are working on this issue, and we want to bring it to the City Council soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Larry Steingold, please come forward.
Thank you, and thank you for doing all your work. Somebody sent me an email, and housing is not part of its public comment, so, regarding housing that's affordable. I got an email from somebody, a group here that says, no. It's no for everything. No housing, no public housing, no hotel, no this, no that. Everything is no. They want no.
Okay.
And I've been talking to people, learning about getting an education about Ojai for the past, I don't know, 40, 50 years. I've only been here five years. But the idea of keeping Ojai, Ojai is great. I like Ojai, I love Ojai, I live here now. This is home. I don't like it to change, but change happens. But these people are all about no. And no doesn't exist. Okay? No doesn't happen. Yes doesn't always happen. Compromise happens, work happens, stuff happens. These people are no. They always, they never come up with any solutions, and I've only heard two or three of their arguments over the past six months. But it's no this, and no housing, we don't want affordable housing, it's catering to the rich, it's catering to the poor. Oh, it's a water this, it's electrical this, whatever the nonsensical idea they come up with, it's a no. So, please, let's try to get to yes on some of this stuff, because there are people here who want to live here, and they can't afford it, or there are no housing for them, and they don't want to live in affordable housing, or housing that's affordable. They want to live in something nice. We have friends who live in $2 million houses. He's 93, she's 83. They want to live here. They've been here 40 years. They have no place to live. They want to sell their house. Where are they gonna move to? Buy another house for $1.5 million, spend $500,000 and end up in the same problem with more expenses? So, please, enough with the no. Tell these people to take a hike, or at least come up with something positive.
Thank you, sir. Bob Daddy?
Good evening. I took a look at your agenda and your future agenda, and I'm taking a look at currently what goes on. And every day I drive by, I take some photos, and I guess I'll start sending them to you, where we have bikes lashed everywhere in town to street signs, poles, telephone poles, stop signs. You name it, we've got bicycles that are lashed. There was an issue here where we had a, I don't know, multi-use facility, and Kathy Nolan, one of my heroes, brought up, you know what? They don't have any bike racks. I don't know why you guys should issue any permits to anybody ever without the bikes. It's like, we have people remodeling, they're not in compliance. We have people that want to expand, they're not in compliance. We don't take a look and see if people are in compliance. We're the most hypocritical, hypocritical place in the world. We say we want to cut down pollution, we want to cut down traffic, we want to solve the traffic problem, we want people to have bikes, and then they get down there, and there's no damn place to tie them up. So, we have one space on the south side, or actually would be the north side of the post office, and one on the west side that's covered by a bush. We have two places at the post office. It's a joke, it's hysterical. We have bikes strewn all over the place. And we have rules, and they're not being enforced anywhere in town. And what I'd like you folks to do is stop with this, this parking stuff. We have way too much parking. We don't need parking. Let the businesses be responsible for the formula. If they don't put enough parking, and they don't have enough parking to support their business, they'll go broke, which is great. We, we have an issue here in town where somebody decided they weren't gonna have any events, they didn't need the parking, they cut down on the parking, now they don't have enough parking to support the facility. I think that's fantastic. Let the businesses get back into do their businesses. And when I took a look at those future things, parking needs to get to the top. One of your Planning Commissioners said, just about everything we do revolves around parking at the Planning Commission. And it does. That's a sad state of affairs. You guys are here for land use and zoning, but it boils down to parking. We had somebody apply, put in a restaurant, and he was six inches too short on the handicap banned access space to be able to put his restaurant here. So now he has this terrific restaurant that you have to drive to Carpinteria to go to. So, we don't have the bikes, we're not cutting down on the traffic, we're not helping the parking, because we're not following our own rules. And you need to get a realistic approach. We don't need nearly as many spaces as we used to, because whoever put that formula together didn't do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to comment on an item not on the agenda? Anyone in the waiting room, Sherry? Okay. Thank you all. Okay, item two on the agenda is a consent item, the minutes of our last meeting of June 15th. Did any Commissioners have any refinements to those minutes? No. Then could we have a motion for approval, please?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
A second, thank you. Any, any discussion? Sherry, call a roll, please, on item two.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Trent.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Murphy.
Yes.
Starkweather.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have two sites that are on the agenda tonight. First of all, 214 Bryant Street, and also 1202 East Ojai.
I have visited the sites. I've had no ex parte contacts.
Thank you.
Ditto. I've visited both sites, but no talking to anyone, neither the petitioners or owners or anybody connected with it.
I've been to both sites a number of times. No ex parte contacts about either of these cases. John?
Uh, yeah, familiar with the sites, visited the sites, no ex parte contacts.
Thank you. All right, item three on the agenda, lot line adjustment at 214 Bryant Street. Maura?
Thank you, Chair Quilisi and Commissioners. This is a request for an adjustment of an existing property line that divides two existing legal conforming lots located at 214 Bryant Street. Per the Ojai Municipal Code, lot line adjustments that exceed 10% of an increase or decrease in area of any affected parcel are to be reviewed and considered by the Planning Commission. Under that amount, they can be reviewed and considered by the Director. The parcels are currently irregular, oh, and these parcels are, more than 10% will be affected. The parcels are currently irregularly shaped, and parcel A is nearly twice the size of parcel B. Also, the parcel line currently runs through a structure which is prohibited. The proposed lot line adjustment will result in two relatively square parcels that are more familiar, similar in size, and will correct the situation where the lot line runs through a structure. The current request will reduce parcel A by approximately 50%, 57%, and increase parcel B by approximately 185%. I want to note that there is a correction, needs to be a correction in the resolution, a revision so that the representative is identified as Jeremy Henry. I think right now it's Glenn Adamson. And also, there was, I'll just bring it up now before you start talking about it, a question about underground tanks. The report identifies that there were two tanks that were removed, and there's a, an attachment from the county in here, in your, in your packet. And what was brought up prior to the meeting was that there were potentially more sites that were not identified with the county contact a few, a while ago, when I made contact with them. So, staff was initially recommending approval of this request. I'm going to just put this forward and let the Commission take over and, and discuss it. If there's any questions of me, and I think we have the applicant here.
Any questions for clarification from staff? We're gonna try to hold it to questions this time and not discuss our opinions before the deliberation time.
Also, Commissioner, I do not believe we have an applicant here.
Well, how can we proceed?
Is either Mr. Adamson or Mr. Henry here?
I don't think we can proceed under that circumstance.
I don't think so. I've got, I've got questions.
Yeah. That's interesting. Well, but there's, there's certainly gonna be questions that the staff's not gonna be able to answer.
Right.
I, I would move to continue this if we don't have to.
I think that's the solution, but at this point, it would have to be to a date uncertain because we don't have anyone to ask, when can you be here to answer questions?
I agree.
Could, would it make, you're gonna, could you just give me my response to my questions in writing then? Or should I ask them?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're continuing it.
If we're continuing, we'll wait on the questions till, till the, the next appropriate time. So, what do you think? Continue to a date uncertain?
Yes.
That's, that's unfortunate because, yeah, the city will have to re-notify people in the area.
I'll move for that.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any discussion?
Good with that.
Sherry, call a roll, please.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Starkweather.
Yes, sorry, sorry. So, can, can I, before we move on, so in the time period, can we get a little more detailed study of the status of those storage tanks?
The storage tanks themselves?
Yeah, and, and my understanding too is that, this came from someone else, more knowledgeable than me. Normally, reports are required to the State Water Resources Control Board of this sort of thing, as well as the Division of Water Quality about underground storage tanks that have been removed, inspected, enclosed, and performed for the state. So, we can get a little more clarity on that issue?
And that was gonna be a question for the applicant tonight, to provide some of that additional information.
I would like the staff to actually investigate that.
Right. And we, look, I, I don't necessarily want to get into the details of it, but the information that was provided within the report tonight, staff felt it was, it was satisfying that requirement, but there's been additional information that's come forward. And that's now barring several more questions that need to be answered.
Okay, appreciate that.
The submission is, the submission is now deemed incomplete, I think, by staff.
Additional information is warranted.
And clearly, one of the questions is if there are other tanks on site.
Yeah.
Where are they, and what condition are they in?
Yeah.
We don't know at this point. And, and we don't have anyone here to answer the question.
Right. Since it's been continued, I don't necessarily want to dive into, to more.
We'll continue this to, if staff can, can contact the applicant, find out when they can be here to answer questions.
Yep. And to Starkweather's point, if there are additional questions, and, and you want to send those to, to staff directly to, to do additional analysis, we could certainly do that within the realm of the lot line adjustment itself, and the parameters beyond, within that.
Well, you'll have more time to, because I just gave them to this morning.
Yeah, you did give them to me this morning, so, yes.
Took a while to read all this stuff and look things up, so.
Okay, thank you. Murphy?
While you're doing a little more investigating, could you also check to see if this addition of the back building has a certificate of occupation?
I'll give a seat.
And could you also check to see whether the fire extinguisher line has been connected?
Yes, we can look into both of those.
Okay, thank you.
Keeping, keeping in mind, there are, there are more extensive rules put out by the Ventura County Fire Protection District than have been adopted by the City Council.
Apparently, the Fire Department did sign off on this particular item. However, it was never completed. So, there's a problem there, which I can document for you if you would like.
Can we also, see whether or not any environmental evaluation of this site, because it seems like
In terms of a phase one or something to that, to that degree?
Like an obvious potential toxic site, given all the trucks and stuff that have been there?
I don't want to, because we've already continued the item, so I don't, I don't want to dive any.
But if we could research that one.
Yes.
If you have more questions for staff, let's send them to staff.
Right, I, I think staff is.
And we'll go on.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Chair, according to order, if I have people that came here to speak, and just because the applicant, or his representative, didn't show up, I really don't feel that people that came here to speak on this, they should be denied that opportunity. They may not be available. When the applicant gets around to be here, after all, they're the ones that aren't scheduled for gentleman.
I don't think we should. Epi, what's the, what's the, what's the right thing to do here?
I think it, it's up to the, the Chair and the Commission. There's no.
Back at you, he said.
Something along those lines. If the, the Commission did decide to go that route, they would re, have to reopen with a motion to allow for public comment on the, the issue.
Okay. And I don't have any cards from anyone that said they want to speak. That's what kind of surprised me.
Let me, I, I have some concern about somebody speaking with not having had the questions from us that could enlighten them, and your answers to them, as well having, you know, a complete report.
That's normally what we do before there is public comment.
Having the applicant, you know, give a presentation, and us asking them questions. So, they're not really, they're gonna give public input without all the complete information. So, I think it would be better not to do it at this point, is my opinion. I mean, it's inconvenient, but I think for their own sake, their, their public input would be more effective and precise and so forth, that they were responding to the questions we asked, reports you made, and the applicant's answers to those questions. That's just my feeling.
Well, we would, we would need a motion to reopen public comment on an item that we've continued. Is there a motion to that effect on the floor?
I move to reopen.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
No second.
For purposes of discussion, I'll second it. Any discussion necessary? Let's, let's call a roll on a motion to reopen public comment on item three.
Quilisi.
No.
Trent.
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather.
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, folks, but we'll have, we'll have context for you the next time, or whenever that is. It may be the next meeting, it may be after that. I'm sorry. I really expected we'd have an applicant here to present a case and be able to give you some context for the case.
Also, if I may add, that when we come back the next time, Lucas and staff will have been able to answer those questions. They may be part of the administrative report, which the, the, you know, neighbors would get in advance, so they'd have, again, more knowledge in which to raise questions. That's my view, anyway.
Okay.
Wait, hold on a second.
Then it's, then it's over.
Okay, hold on, the applicant is on virtually?
Yes.
I think we're done.
I think we finished it. We finished it.
Yeah, I think we should go on.
Well?
Since we have other questions, anyway.
Mr. City Attorney, what do you think?
This is completely the prerogative of the, the Chair and the Planning Commission.
Well, if we, if we have an applicant, I can, I can see an argument for continuing to prosecute the case.
Continuing now, you mean?
Continuing now. If we have an applicant, then we can ask questions of staff, and we can hear from the applicant. We actually asked questions of the staff already. Some of them, I think, will have to be answered by the applicant.
Possibly.
And just, I recognize that the Commission is starting to, to transition to the next item, but hearing and seeing that the applicant is here virtually, who is here virtually?
If we have an applicant, we should have a case, I think. Does this take a ruling from the Chair, or do we have to need, have another motion?
Yeah, be another motion.
Another motion is appropriate here.
Okay.
I move to reopen.
Reopen the case.
The case.
Okay. All right, Sherry?
I'll second that.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Starkweather.
Yes.
Okay, let's hear from the applicant. Mr. Henry?
Yeah.
I don't think I got my questions answered yet.
Oh, hold on, hold on, just a moment.
But I can do them during deliberation, too, if you want. Doesn't matter.
We can have discussion.
Questions first, I would, I would recommend that.
Questions are appropriate at this point to clarify.
Okay, so you don't have an answer about the underground storage tanks?
No, but we have an applicant here who may be able to answer that.
I had a question about.
Excuse me, Commissioner Starkweather, I would suggest repeating the questions in case the applicant didn't hear them the first time.
Right.
That would just make everything, so the record is, is clear.
Okay, I'll repeat them. I'll turn them over to the, there, as I can put them in the record. The first one was, you wrote on page, this is to Lucas, one of your administrative report on this item, that, that the Environmental Health Division records indicated underground storage tanks on the site had been removed in 1998. Exhibit C indicates that two, two 2,000 gallon underground storage tanks were removed. However, in the attached 2019 EDR Radius Report of GeoCheck, on page nine and 10 of the main report, not the summary, the Adamson's Automotive and Towing appears to have nine storage tanks.
I thought that report actually showed six.
Excuse me, six.
Right. So, that's, that was a report that you provided earlier today. The, the information that I had been provided and staff in doing our research in due diligence showed two had been removed, but didn't identify whether or not there were any additional sites. However, your report is showing now that there were six. Now, the question then is.
Not my report.
Well, the report that you provided to, to staff today. The question then, from staff's standpoint, is it six minus the two from 98, or is it six in addition to the two? There's too many questions that have been raised by this one report that, that has since surfaced. So, staff doesn't necessarily have an answer to that. It's, it would require some due diligence on staff's standpoint. However, the applicant is here and available, and I would, I would also punt that to the applicant to respond to that, to see if they have any additional information and clarification.
The next question was, this site appears to have been a truck and major equipment storage site for some period. Those type of vehicle sites often experience hazardous waste seeping into the soil. It appears from the real estate sign that the owner is marketing this property for sale. Have we, do we have any, have we had any environmental hazardous soil analysis of this property?
Now, for a lot line adjustment, I can't necessarily require that as a, as a condition or something to move, move the project forward. However, if there's a project that's proposed, then yes, we can, we can require those technical documents.
So, my next, next question goes right to that question. Although minor alterations in land limitations, a minor lot line adjustment would normally be a categorical, categorical exception. Should this apply in this type of circumstance where there's clearly a possibility of having contaminated soil due to this extended use of a large, of large equipment vehicles stored, and the landlord is marketing, wouldn't Prudence call for a SEQA review of the newly created lot before we approve this request? Would Section 15302A of SEQA come into play here, since this is a case clearly where, and this is a quote from that section, "A project that is ordinarily insignificant in its impact on the environment may, in a particular sensitive environment, be significant." It seems to me that this potentially, that section potentially could apply, and that the category exception may not be automatically used.
With a, okay, so, it's, it's a good, it's a good wholesome question, I believe. In terms of how categorical exemptions work, for, specifically for a lot line adjustment, we're talking about a line that's being adjusted. A line that's being adjusted over an existing building onto a separate site. Now, whether or not there's contamination on that site has yet to be identified. However, because it is a, a movement of a line, and not necessarily a project, development project that's coming forward as a proposal, those technical documents are not required in this case. However, I have seen in, in past examples of projects where a lot. However, I have seen in, in past examples of projects where a lot line adjustment is accompanied with a project. And in those cases, absolutely, there's technical documents that are absolutely required. Uh, phase ones, phase twos are examples of that to address, um, some of the, the questions and concerns that you've raised.
So let me add one other little fact, because I'm, I'm raising the question whether this is really a minor adjustment. I noticed that Lot A is decreasing by 58 percent and Lot B is increasing by 114 percent. This seems to me, raised question, whether this really is a minor alteration in land use limitations.
I think the, the difference between that would be is if you were creating a lot. That would then take it out of the category of a minor and move into the category of a parcel map essentially, which is major. That, that then, we have a process through our code, through chapter three, um, title 10, that provides the parameters for us to review. Here, we're talking about not an increase in the number of lots. The number of lots remain the same. It's adjusting an existing line.
One final one. Uh, this is a non-conforming use. Um, and normally, in this zone, if it came before us, it would require a conditional use permit. But this was non-conforming beforehand. If it, if it had a conditional use permit, I would assume they would have to go through the conditional use permit process to do something like this. Given that it's non-conforming, it doesn't have a conditional use permit, shouldn't we be applying that same standard?
So the non-conforming section of our code, it's a good question. I think it's a valid one, too, from a use standpoint. Non-conforming section of our code talks about any non-conforming uses that are being expanded. So for instance, if the use itself was being expanded, these non-conforming uses, the building was expanded, um, the, well, I guess it would probably be the buildings that were being expanded, we would be looking at a CUP. That's, that is the appropriate measure that's identified within our code currently. Here, we're once again only talking about the lot line itself being adjusted and not a use itself being altered in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Trent, any questions for staff?
I would like to, the, the tank situation, I would like to have the applicant respond to that, because that's not something I have a response to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, well, before we do that, um, just a quick question. Did, did staff look at any other reports outside of the one that's provided in the documentation, uh, for the tanks?
Aside from the, the, the report that was provided with the staff report, um, as a part of the, for the commission tonight, there was a report that was provided that's been forwarded to the rest of the commission.
Right.
That is, that is calling to question...
Right.
Uh, the additional tanks, um, on-site and whether or not those have since been, um, alleviated. And at this point, with a document like that, there's additional, um, research that would need to be done to clarify that.
No, I get it. My question is, did, before that report was made available, did staff look at any additional reports outside of the one that was provided in the material?
Sorry, you kind of tailed off there, Trent.
Oh, sorry.
Can you say it again?
Yeah. Did staff look at any other reports outside of the one that was provided in the, um, administrative report before you got the report from Jeffrey?
Uh, no.
Okay. You just looked at one?
Just looked at one. The one that was provided by, um, environmental health.
Okay. That, that was my question. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Then let's, uh, let's hear from the applicant. Mr. Henry?
Yes, hello.
Please go ahead, sir.
Yeah, with the, uh, underground storage tank, I don't have any, uh, all I have is what, the same report that you guys have. I don't have any other, uh, comments on that, as that didn't have to do with the lot line adjustment.
Which, which report is that? The one saying two, two tanks were removed?
Yeah, the one that, uh, Sherry sent in the email for this. That's the first time I've seen it, uh, because land surveying doesn't deal with underground storage tanks. That's a separate task.
Yep.
But we were just dealing with, we, our purpose was to clean up the lot line, because it currently goes through the existing building. So we wanted to clean up, make everything square, um, and so we'd be, uh, conforming again for, for the, for the...
More conforming, at least, yes.
More conforming, correct, correct.
Chair Quillisi? I believe the applicant is here as well. The property owner's here, Mr. Adamson's.
Mr. Adamson, would you care to address the commission? That's the only place.
To our knowledge, the only tanks that are on that property before were the ones for fuel and diesel that we used to use for the trucks. These storage tanks that keep coming up that are underground, my parents bought that property in 75 from Gallup Construction. And to our knowledge, there was nothing said then, and even today, we have no idea about any underground tanks whatsoever. And as far as heavy equipment stuff being stored out there in that property, there hasn't been since we've been there. It's just been our equipment, the tow trucks and whatnot, but nothing down there. It's been mainly like RVs and things like that that don't leak fluids like that. So I don't know anything further about the lower part that, other than it's clean, to my knowledge. We did have the phase one done, you know, but I think we're going for phase two after this, so...
Phase one of what?
That, part of that section of that land.
The land survey, or, okay.
By who?
Is that by Mr. Henry, you mean?
No, I don't have the name in front of me. I didn't come equipped with that name, I'm sorry. I can get it to you, but I don't know the name.
When you say phase one, this was the part of, of the land before you did, before you presented the lot line adjustment.
Correct.
What was the original?
Yeah.
And so someone was evaluating it for what purpose?
To buy it before.
Buy it. So they did their own evaluation?
Right.
Oh.
But you haven't presented it to us.
I have it this evening. I have it, I can bring it here.
You have a copy of it? I would like to see it.
Yeah, I can bring it, but I, it'll have to be tomorrow, of course, you know?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I, I have, I have questions as well. If, if, if there are, in fact, additional tanks on the land, I'd like to know where they are. We, we, we have an, well, there's, there's a, there, that's good. We're on the same side in this then, for sure. It's clear that a lot line that bisects an existing building needs to be fixed. If, if the proposed lot line turns out to be bisecting a tank that none of us have seen or know particularly about, I think that's a potential problem as well. Because if there's anything toxic there, then it could be a problem for two different landowners. And, and so my question, um, and I, I guess you've probably seen this radius map report now. If not, we can make a copy available to you.
That would be good.
It says, it says at some point, and I don't remember the date on that report...
It's, uh, 20, it's 2019, so it wasn't that long ago.
Okay.
It was 18 or 19.
Well, um, okay, that's 20 years after the first two tanks were removed.
Yeah, that's true.
So, so if that report is true from two and a half, three years ago, there may be as many as six additional tanks on the property. And I think we'd like to know what the situation is with those before, before we decide on a final division of the property, just so that there are no problems.
The county has record that there's six more tanks on the property? Is that the...
This is from this organization called EDU. It is, uh, where's the name of it? This was done on, um, let's see. Sorry. I don't know who commissioned this, but Environmental Data Resources? It seems like they use like, uh...
They use several...
GIS kind of stuff. Geo, so they didn't actually find them, but they were somehow, they had the ability...
They were on somebody's map. GIS doesn't show you stuff.
Whatever GEO code is.
It just gives you geolocations for things.
Maybe they had a way of finding where they...
They used several state reports.
Yeah.
Okay. Well...
Is there a slight chance our property could be mixed up with one next door?
No, no, it's got your address. It's called Adamson's Automotive. Uh, it, uh, well, you can check with them, actually.
Right.
We'll give you that report. And there were some other, there's sort of a history of them inspecting this property, too, and finding some hazardous, ever, toxic materials at different times.
Well...
But it's some time back.
Spilled, spilled automotive fluids could be called that, sure.
Yes.
That you find around the garage.
They mentioned one of these tanks, most of the tanks they have listed, they don't say what they are, but one of them was diesel, I see. And, uh...
They're either diesel or unleaded.
Your ownership of the property, we don't know.
Yeah.
That's the problem, we don't know.
Yeah. And the tanks that I'm talking about that were removed are clear up towards the shop itself.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
These that they're talking about is somewhere...
So the question really is, the lower piece of the property...
Well, they don't separate in their report your two pieces of property. It's all one, all one report, so I have no way of knowing.
It's all one address. Yeah, it's all one address.
I have no way of knowing what, what that would be.
Okay.
The other question I had is that, um, so you had someone that wanted to buy it at one point, and they did a, a survey?
Right.
And you have potentially another buyer that is trying to do a survey? Okay.
Yeah.
And what is the...
Certainly what a prudent buyer would do.
Can I ask this question? What is the intent, intended use, since this is a C1 and a M1?
It's M1.
Commissioner Starkweather, I'd...
I can't ask that.
I caution against asking.
Okay, okay, fine, huh?
Not, not exactly relevant to the issues tonight.
If it becomes a subject of a project...
Okay.
Then we'll see it again.
Don't answer it, then.
I can't really tell you that one.
Don't answer it.
Yeah, I'm not going to, thank you.
But you can give us that other report, I hope.
Pardon?
You can submit the previous, is that okay?
Yeah, so it sounds like you've done a phase one?
We have.
And you're looking to do a phase two?
Right, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so staff will be asking for that information as a part of, of the lot line adjustment.
Part of when this comes back.
You don't have copies of the phase one?
No.
Okay. Would you, you'd like that, right?
Yes.
Okay, no problem. Okay. All right. Anything else I need to bring to school?
I don't know.
Is there...
My pencil and razor?
Is there an estimate by, uh, I, I, it looks to me like the land survey portion of this is done unless we find a problem with the proposed lot line. So is there, do you want to speculate on a time when we might actually do this again? Or, uh, continue this to a date uncertain and figure out when you can...
Well, we'd like to move forward as quickly as we can.
Of course, of course, yes. Uh, if you have a phase one already that you can submit to staff, that would be helpful. If you are doing a phase two, uh, I'm not sure what the, what the differences are there...
Right.
Or what they're looking for in a phase two, but I think those findings would also be helpful to staff to present the case to us.
And I'd like to give staff enough time to actually research these...
Sure, of course.
Various state agencies and so forth.
And, and we'll make sure that you get a copy of, of the report that we have seen...
Right.
Outside of the packet, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, the appropriate measure would probably be the, either the first or second meeting in, in August.
Okay. Do you have a cho, you have a preference there? We're talking about the third of August or the 17th, I think.
Let's try for the third.
Okay.
Well, it's not a trying. We would be doing it date specific with all that information and being provided by then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It didn't sound like the phase one showed additional tanks, just from what I've heard in the meeting tonight. So if, if it doesn't have, if it doesn't have the information that you want, then we may want to have the applicant, um, get us, get the phase two, if indeed that's something that's going to show the tanks. If it is, if the tanks aren't, if the tank locations aren't available, then you're not going to have the information that you're asking for.
Yeah, the, I mean, typically a phase two goes into a deeper dive. It does soil testing.
There's a phase two, it does soil samples, but does it do ground penetrating radar or something?
No, I don't think it goes that far. I think what it really boils down to is, is Mr. Adamson reaching out to the company that produced this document and, and kind of unwinding where that information's coming from. Uh, if there's six tanks on site, or were there eight tanks on site? And it's been reduced to six.
Six here, but whether or not eight at some point.
This is 15 years after, 20 years after.
And also the importance of the location. I hear, just saying six tanks doesn't really give us a whole lot of information to go off of.
Right, we don't know.
Wouldn't the county have a map of where those tanks are?
We have reached out to environmental health and, and they've provided us with the study showing two that were removed in 98. And that's, that's a part of this report tonight.
Yeah. That's the only ones that I am aware of.
Okay.
Two we talked about.
But I do think you need to do your due diligence, because I have a conflicting report identifying six tanks. Um, and that needs to be verified.
Yeah.
We can't, can't move forward without having that detailed information.
We'd like to know ourselves, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Because it keeps coming up, and I don't understand.
I would be more comfortable if we could get the phase two report before we had to vote on this.
I don't know.
I don't know that we can...
What's in a phase two report?
Well, I don't want to go into details on the phase two, but it typically goes into, rather than just the surface and the research and the history of the site, it goes into soil, um, soil samples and gives, um, more technical information than what you would typically see with a phase one.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So...
The one thing I would say that, yeah, I agree with that, the phase two's not going to show the tank location.
That's true, but it might show something else.
Yeah.
Don't know. Okay, is everybody happy with August 3rd?
Well, hold on. Is August 3rd enough time for you? Because that's giving you roughly less than a month. So that, that would then, that would then require us to have the information back to staff to review. Um, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but it would be at least two weeks prior to that meeting. So you've got literally less than two weeks, probably 10 days to do this.
The option was the 17th?
Yeah, I would, I would probably opt for the 17th for you, just to make sure that you've got enough information.
I think it's the 3rd and the 17th.
Yeah, double-check that.
3rd and the 17th, yes.
We'll do the 17th.
17th is probably more, more reasonable for you to, to do your due diligence.
Okay.
Okay, so it would be appropriate then to have a motion to continue this case to the 17th of August.
Don't we have public, uh, public input?
Yeah, we do need to open it up for a public...
That is true, yes. We have, we have two speakers for this. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate your being...
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies, thank you.
All right, I have two cards for people, uh, oh, I'm sorry. We'll open the public hearing. I have two cards for people that wish to speak on this case. First up, William Ulrich.
Uh, William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road. The city in general and the community development department, uh, in particular, has an execrable history of enforcement, follow-up to conditions of approval. And I think any of your determinations and your deliberations should factor that in, because it seems you're being directed into a very narrow consideration, a very narrow deliberation. As in, this is just about a parcel, a property line adjustment. Yet it isn't. Because, as you've asserted, in the event you approve it and the, uh, new line, um, either falls, as you'd indicated, Chair, uh, across an unknown location for a tank, an underground tank, or worse still, it winds up transferring all of the tanks, even if it's just one, one or more tanks, to the other property that, from where it is presently, where they are presently. I'd also like to point out that the report that keeps, that was part of the packet, unless there was more available to the public, isn't a report. It's, at least it's not a report of environment, from Ventura County Environmental Health. It's just a letter from the abatement company saying, "We pulled two tanks and processed them." There isn't even a stamp on it that, on that document that says Ventura County Environmental Health, that I could see. So as a consequence, that's not a Ventura County record. That's not, uh, it's not comprehensive and, nor is it probative. An additional, the planning commission, in approving this lot line adjustment, may be transferring liabilities, issues, contamination, et cetera, to a completely different lot. I would submit that, once again, if you're narrowed into having to approve this, that you approve it with conditions. And those conditions are that the applicant obtains the CUP that they apparently never had, that the applicant obtains a certificate of occupancy and a final inspection from the city, which they've never had. And stepping back for just a moment, the project that apparently, according to the CDD director, doesn't exist, does exist. There was an addition to the existing building. It's never been final. Applicant to provide proof of abatement of all underground storage tanks per California State database, as well as Ventura County Environmental Health violations, there may be those. And the applicant to complete a fire sprinkler system, including plan check, permit, and final operational inspection and approval. That's a requirement for a commercial building. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Lucas taking copious notes. Next up, Bob Daddy.
Well, uh, hey, thank you, everybody. I think this thing is...
Well, uh, hey, thank you, everybody. I think this thing has progressed down to where I wanted to get as the director for the community facility director for Ojai Water Groundwater Basin. I wanted to make sure that we, as one of the very, very, very few communities that do not have state water, make sure that we do everything we can to protect our groundwater. If we pollute the groundwater, we have no backup, we have no reserve, we have zero. And we have gone through this and I've gone through a number of large claims in this community with the LUF Fund. That is the Underground Leftover Fuel Tank Fund, where we've had to have people had problems, extensive problems, and had to have them mitigated. So my purpose was, and, and I see that we're going to go with the phase one, which didn't know anything about, phase two, which I didn't read any literature. And if we're going to go ahead and go through these things and determine where they are, let's determine where they are. This report you have, um, I'm really not familiar with the people that put this thing out. I'm not really familiar how accurate they are. I'm not really familiar how they go around to determine anything. I'm not sure if they didn't do a nineteen thirty-five flyover and see five or six tanks sitting on the ground and they geolocated them and said, okay, they were there. But I was there across the way at the railroad station when that tank was actually hauled up out of the ground and got to see the weepage and leakages and seepage and the material for the spread of, of dirt. I was there at Garvey's property, which is now the yoga place on the corner of Ojai Avenue and Bryant Street, and have looked at a number of these tanks, the tanks we had at the Chevron Station, the tanks that we've had in town with a half a dozen other places. And this is pretty critical for us. And we have a very high groundwater and we have perched water, which means we get a huge quick migration. That's why we have testing from where the mob shop was before that station. And that's why we have different testing areas because we did have a lot of migration over the years of pollutants, petroleum pollutants into our water system. So, um, again, I think you've taken care of that, where you were going to ask for these things to be done. And that was my purpose for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present or in the waiting room who wishes to speak on item three? All right, then a motion to continue this to August seventeenth.
Can I just ask, Lucas, that all those suggestions that Mr. Ulrich brought up, can you check those out? I don't, I don't know how valid they are, but they sound like they were interesting.
Yes, absolutely. We'll look into those and include, include those in the report that comes before this commission in the future, yes.
So a continuance?
I'll move for ten.
I'll second.
To August seventeenth. Any discussion?
Good.
Sherry, let's, uh, let's have our last vote on item three tonight.
Quillacy?
To continue. Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Thank you.
Terrific. Okay. Sorry for the delay, but we'll all feel better when we have answers to these questions.
Appreciate it.
Okay, item four, a concept review for the property at twelve oh two East Ojai Avenue. Please lead us through it.
Thank you. This is a conceptual review for the remodel and reuse of the former bowling alley located at twelve oh two East Ojai Avenue. The goal this evening is for the planning commission and the public to provide comments to the applicant regarding a conceptual development plan. The conceptual development includes a restaurant with indoor and outdoor dining, service for beer and wine, food preparation for off-site sale in an onsite delicatessen, and outdoor recreation. And in addition to the recreation outdoors, there's a botanical garden, a variety of drought tolerant trees, a water feature. And the water feature is the centerpiece of the garden with shade structure for outdoor lounging. The project description describes the water feature that includes waterfalls, meandering creek, and a natural beach setting. The subject property is approximately sixty-five thousand square feet and is developed currently with a fourteen and a half square foot vacant bowling alley with forty-six onsite, and right now there are forty-six onsite parking spaces. The building is located toward the rear or northern portion of the property and includes parking that's adjacent to, um, Ojai and Golden West avenues. The new construction is proposed within the footprint of the existing building and some of the existing materials are proposed to be reused, including the steel girders that support the bowling alley roof. They're to remain in place where they are now as part of the, uh, the new building. It's important to note to the planning commission, planning commissioners, that the property is the former, um, Ojai Valley Bowling Alley, infamous. Um, it was vacated in the nineties and since that time it has been the subject of several conceptual reviews, including for offices, general retail, hotels, and ma- manufacturing uses. In oh nine, the commission reviewed a concept review to reopen the bowling alley as is. In twenty fifteen, the review was for a boutique hotel with, um, airstream campers. In twenty sixteen, there was a brewery and restaurant and hotel proposed. In twenty seventeen, there was a restaurant with outdoor dining and a brewery with a bar, outdoor recreation amenities, and a multi-purpose room, um, and also outdoor storage containers and a swimming pool. Uh, the subject property is located in the East Ojai Avenue Corridor Design Concept Area of the general plan that, and this requires that new development stimulate architectural interest and diversity in keeping with rural and agricultural, uh, character. The East Ojai Design Concept, East Ojai Avenue Corridor Design Contact, Concept encourages adaptive reuse of existing structures and states that although parking may be, um, provided in front of the buildings, it shouldn't dominate the visual feature of the site. So the applicant is attempting to, to achieve this by reusing some of the portion of the existing building. And although the parking is along the street frontages, the applicant, um, does have landscaping there and could perhaps, um, increase the dens- density and height of the landscaping in those street frontages to screen the parking lot. That also comes later in staff comments. Um, the project site is within the special housing overlay SPL district. That means that the property may be developed for affordable housing. The uses that are proposed here now are permitted. And the SPL district doesn't require that there be affordable housing there, but it is, um, it provides for that opportunity. The corridor, uh, thoroughfare corridor overlay, that's TCO district, includes development standards when proposing improvements along Ventura, or excuse me, Ojai Avenue, within the right-of-way. The purpose of this overlay zone or overlay is to maintain open character of significant views from important, uh, thoroughfares, but also to ensure that traffic movements aren't impaired by the new development. The concept review here includes maintaining the existing driveway on Ojai Avenue and is proposing a new approach on the side street. Um, a traffic study addressing several development standards is identified and is included in your packet. The applicant submitted the traffic study as part of the submittal and the report uses the state of California traffic policies and concludes that traffic generated by this proposal is below the state standard thresholds. The study considers the use as local serving. And the study also includes that's, that it's anticipated that the use would reduce vehicle miles traveled, that's VMT, um, in the city and the county by providing new restaurant and market uses for areas, um, for current, current residents and employees that are in the east end of Ojai. It's also anticipated that a significant percentage of project-generated traffic would be by passerby traffic. I want to talk a little bit about the parking. Uh, the staff report has some inaccurate numbers. The required parking calculated at, it, I recalculated it and calculated it to require fifty-two spaces, um, as opposed to, I think I said in the staff report that it was forty-six spaces. Uh, and the application or the submittal has also been revised since you saw, since it was provided to you in your packet. And now they're providing forty-seven spaces, as opposed to the forty-six that they were providing. Um, there is a deficiency now in, in, um, in parking. A formal submittal would require a request for the planning commission to review a design review permit. And in that permit, you would be, we would be evaluating the parking and perhaps a variance would be required if the numbers stayed the same. The landscape plan was not initially a part of the conceptual review and therefore it's not, a detailed landscape plan is not a part of your packet. It has, however, now been submitted and will be part of the applicant's, um, uh, presentation to you and there's a PowerPoint to come. Um, when the project is formally submitted, we would be requiring screening of mechanical equipment and trash enclosures and also outdoor lighting details. And so those things would be provided later when there's a formal submittal. And also because this is a proposal, um, of a commercial development that exceeds three hundred thousand dollars, the applicant would be required to include public artwork. At this time, the public, um, artwork would be the carport that you didn't see in your packet, but again, is going to be presented by the applicant in their presentation. Um, there's also a tower that will be, um, shown to you. So if the property owner decides to formally submit, the project would require approval of the planning commission, or by the planning commission of a design review permit, a minor conditional use permit for the outdoor dining facility that's associated with the restaurant, and also a conditional use permit for all the other outdoor recreational uses. If, oh, sorry. Stop that, that sentence right there. Um, so while the reuse of the building and site is desired, the reuse must be in a way that not only complies with the current development standards, but also complements the city and works well with the adjacent residential community. Although the setbacks are being met, the adjacent uses, being residential, require a sensitive, um, consideration. The current floor plan indicates that there's food processing, food processing or a kitchen on the north side of the, of the building. That would not create a lot of noise for the, um, the residents there to the north, however, um, more extensive landscaping might be recommended. Um, all of the utilities that are required for the restaurant use, um, including, um, I guess water would be the biggest issue potentially. And for this reason, as part of a formal submittal, will serve letters would be required for all utilities. But again, specifically water. This will ensure the city of the applicant's ability to secure, um, those utilities. Due to the size of the site, the type of the use proposed and the city's visible traffic, it would be expected that traffic generation from the proposal would negatively impact the city. However, the traffic study concluded that the project would be considered local serving and expects that a significant percentage of the project-generated traffic would be through passerbys, passbys. Um, the ultimate conclusion of the study in the project is that the project would not generate significant transportation impacts. I expect that you have questions of me and then also we do have the applicant here. And again, they would like to present to you a PowerPoint when it's their, when it's their time to present.
Right, okay. Questions for staff? Commissioner Trent? By the way, Commissioner Trent is with us virtually tonight as a precaution related to COVID. Not that he has it, but there's a precaution there. And so, thank you for that, sir.
I appreciate it. Um, questions for staff? Um, not at the moment, but I know I'll have some questions here and just a few, most likely after we see the, uh, the applicant.
No doubt we'll have more as we go through deliberations as well.
Chair?
Commissioner Murphy?
Oh, no, not at this, not at this time.
I know I said it at the very beginning. I think it was my third sentence, but I just want to say it again in a conclusion. And that is that this is a conceptual review tonight and there isn't a determination to be made by the commission. Um, it's to provide, uh, comments to the applicant.
Right, yeah, there will be no decision on the project tonight. There, first of all, there's not enough information to make such a decision, but we will be providing feedback to the applicant. Yes, sir. You got a question for staff?
Couple of questions. Okay. Not to that. Uh, so the site, uh, is eventually on our complete streets program and sidewalking. When, when do we anticipate that bicycle trails and stuff would reach that site? Do you have any ideas or plan for that? Cause it seems like that's relevant to traffic and, uh, particularly, you know, like there's a sidewalk in front of the, um, Forest, Forest Service, but there's just a dirt trail between that and the Hulk motel there.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just wondering, what, what, what would be the, I mean, would the project itself generate?
I think there's sidewalk, yeah, I think there's sidewalk along West, Golden West right now.
There is.
Yeah, but it stops in between there. It's a, it's a dirt trail there.
Yeah, there's, there's some, there's some gaps. Uh, I don't necessarily have a timeline for, for ATP and how that's going to be phased in, um, in front of me, but I can certainly get that information to you. We could, we could include that in future.
Okay, the second question I have is the use of level of service. My understanding, particularly since we dealt with the municipal advisory committee in the county, that, oh, municipal advisory committee in the county on this issue, that this is no longer something that we use, level of service. So I, maybe they were just dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's cause that's what's in our, in our, uh, element, traffic element, but that's no longer relevant in any more, is it?
You can still use both, but you've, you've got to make sure that you're analyzing VMT for sure, cause that's really the new metric for traffic.
Yes, okay, okay. So we haven't, we're going to eventually update that element.
I think the idea is that LOS will eventually phase out, but for right now, we're including both.
Okay, my final question has to do with parking. So on page seven of your report, you said that you had some new calculations. Could you go through that in more detail, what those were? Cause I'm looking at the calculations you had already.
Sure, well, what, what I changed when I gave you the number, I think it was fifty-two, is that, um, Chair actually brought to my attention, when calculating, uh, for a restaurant, the code says it's one, one parking space per every one hundred square feet of gross floor area for the restaurant or, uh, one space per every two and a half seats, whichever is greater. And the report has the one space per every two and a half seats. And this is for indoor dining only. I want to make sure that's very specific. But when I recalculated it and calculated the restaurant, which includes rest, uh, rest, indoor, indoor dining, kitchen, restrooms, when I calculated the square footage of those three and, um, divided by one hundred, and then I counted the seats for indoor dining and divided by two point five, the seating for the, uh, the parking for the seating was actually greater. So I changed that number. And so what I've come up with is that the, would, total parking would be required at fifty-two. That is for the restaurant, calculated just the way I told you just now. And all of the rest of the indoor area is one space per every two hundred and fifty square feet. And that area that I'm talking about now would be the, um, the delicatessen, uh, retail area.
Game room.
Thank you, the indoor dan- game room. And I think the, potentially the processing kitchen. I do have all of the numbers and if you want, I mean, I can get, get those to you.
It's now, it's now thirty-two and twenty versus thirty-nine and twenty.
Exactly.
So my second related question is section two, ten, uh, dash two, dash two dot one four oh six, reduction in parking requirements?
Yes.
As a provision where a site, commercial site, has multiple uses?
Yes.
Which this appears to be, because you have, uh, takeout, you've got like a recreation area and you have an indoor/outdoor dining. And as I understand it, that applied to Tippel and Ramble, even though it's one building, they were,
Yes.
they got reduced for that. So my question is, have we looked at that alternative shared use parking, um, provisions? Cause they call for six spaces each thousand square feet, which would only be eighteen for the, for the actual restaurant. So has this been looked at, whether this could apply for this?
So when we calculated, when we used that provision, um, we actually used it and did not include extra parking for the outdoor dining, uh, facility aspect of this project. The indoor dining was not calced differently than, uh, the standard, um, calculations required in the code, which I, which I just went through, which is one. Which I which I just went through, which is one to one hundred.
These these would be considered be lower amounts if you use the.
Yes, they would.
The alternatives, so that wasn't looked at.
Correct, that was not looked at.
But is it, so that's some we could look at or the applicant could look at?
Are you asking whether or not it's relevant?
Yes.
Potentially.
Okay, okay, that's what.
That's the whole, that's that's kind of the whole purpose of the concept. Review at this point is to kind of flush out some of those questions to to do a deeper dive.
Thanks.
Okay. Great, then let's hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative, I'm not sure. Who is here to do that? Mark Whitman.
Good evening, yes, Mark Whitman, architect here in Ojai. Thank you for having us present this project to you tonight, thank you the staff doing a great job with that presentation and describing the project very well. I don't, I think my work is done. Maybe not, but I'm here representing Tony Yanau. He's the owner of the property and Tony's a resident here of Ojai.
That's Ojai Mountain Farms LLC.
Yes, so he he's he. Ojai Mountain Farms is a hundred acre parcel he owns in the upper Ojai. He is currently farming. And so that's part of the project. But I think Tony's online tonight, I hope that he could say a few words about.
We'll invite him to speak as well then.
Yeah, I would like I like him to kind of talk about his vision for the property and for the project, but also Bill Malley, the landscape architect. His plan's not in your package, his plan came in late and but he is here tonight with a plan that we have on our PowerPoint presentation. It's similar to the plan that we provided, but he did some refinements and the parking is a different layout. But I think I'd like to start off with Tony if he's if he's here to make his presentation. He's he's away on a family trip and he was going to be available via Zoom, but he's in Italy, so I'm not sure if he's connecting or not and it's hard to say.
Be difficult.
Phones work from Italy, I'm not sure about video.
He was going to be available, but. I guess not, so you see. Is he there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, please go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, I can't tell if I'm if you can hear me or not.
Yes, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I thank you for for looking at this with us and for taking some time for us here. I've owned this property. The old bowling alley now for a few years and I've I've come to the city a couple of times with a few different concepts and ideas that. Seem to be timely or not timely at the time and we've come up with this is this is, I really hope that the city is going to embrace what we're trying to do here. It really seems to be in keeping with what everybody has been saying they want for this type of property. And so I'll just walk you through it briefly and I encourage anyone to try and to anyone to. So we have a piece of property, when I say we, my partners and I have a piece of property in upper Ojai. Where we've been farming for the last couple of years and this. This facility, the old bowling alley will be our retail face of the farm. So this is the retail expert, we like to tell the retail expression of the farm. And our goal is to have grounds that exemplify a lot of the things that we're growing up at the farm, so small. Small example gardens of some of the things that we're growing that are there for. For patrons to be able to enjoy and be able to walk through and kind of get get a sense of what kind of stuff we're doing, it's an it's an organic regenerative farm. And. And so that's in itself is. Has its own draw. Our goal is to keep as much stuff that we serve and prepare and sell. In the in the deli, which is also the kind of store and in the restaurant and the bar area to all be things that we are growing and processing at the farm. So this is about as local a project as you can, as you could want, you know, everything's coming from the Ojai Valley or upper Ojai. And being shared with people, residents and guests. As you, as we go through this project, what you'll see is that it's really a. I applaud Mark Whitman for this, he came to, I said, well, look at this old building, we got to tear this thing down. And start from scratch and he said, whoa, 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 before you do that, let's do this in the cleanest, most responsible architecture possible and we'll keep as much of this. As we can to keep the project as green as possible, which appealed to me, I just didn't think that was a possibility. Mark has really taken the lead here and and helped me to see how just how far we can go with this. And what you see in these images is approximately, it's a little less than half of the current building size. So most of you probably are familiar with the property and when you see it. Essentially, it's mostly a giant parking lot with a sixteen or so thousand square foot building. Now we're talking about a building that's less than eight thousand feet and a lot of gardens. Mark, would you like me to continue or do you think that's enough for you to get going with?
We do have a PowerPoint presentation.
I'd say you may have to unhook him and then he can come back.
We still need you on the microphone.
Tony, I guess you got to hang up. We're good.
He removed him, okay, okay.
So you've gotten some really good information, so I'm just going to walk you through the project real quick if we can go to the next slide. So the site plan shows the the structure, we're remodeling the existing. Bowling alley structure at the north side of the property. We're trying to salvage as much of the existing structure as possible, but the centerpiece of the project. Is going to be this guard space that we're taking up, you know, more than half the front of the of the structure. To be this botanical garden with various games and activities. I didn't mention that Tony is a is a, you know, restaurateur, he's been doing this a long time and he's a current operator of the Ojai pub. But he's kind of known for doing these family friendly spaces that. Provide, you know, activities for kids and families and and also, you know, food and beverage kind of facility.
On this, on this drawing here, I admire your your drawing pages here. It would, it would help when you come back for a DRP if you would show. Where the original building was and where the new building is, the original building footprint is not on this, is not on the site plan.
Yeah, we. Apologize, I did, I did realize that and.
If it's there, I couldn't see it, I'm sorry.
It was a red dash line that I asked my draftsman to put on there and so it did. The existing footprint comes. Over to about halfway into the parking lot.
Oh, that little dash line, oh, okay.
Red dash line there, yeah.
Yeah, okay, there's something that said E existing holding line.
Right.
I only saw a dashed line across the back of the.
Right.
Drawing.
This dashed line here?
Yeah, I guess that's it.
That's the back of the building or the front?
That's the back of the existing building.
I see, I see.
On the east side, yeah, that.
And then down, down the west side of it.
We're maintaining the the wall on the on the north, north and. And west side and so those are existing walls, we're going to, we're going to salvage and maintain. So we're really bringing in the the structure quite a bit on the east side. And also on the south side of the structure.
Okay.
May I go walk you through the floor plan, which is the next slide?
Before you go to the floor plan. If someone is bicycling, how would they get from the road to the restaurant?
Well, there is a bike storage. We went back and forth, Bill, Bill will address that, so Bill Malley is, he designed the. The landscape plan and I'll I'll kind of leave that for him to to talk about, but there is a bike bike storage place. So the. Well, wait, let's go back to the site plan, there's one more thing that I want to point out, in the front of the project, we added recently. Some solar carports and a energy tower which are right as you drive in. They'd be at the eat where the EV parking spaces are, there'd be two solar carports to park underneath that will have solar panels.
That's those wide spaces that are.
Exactly.
Those in facing north.
Yeah.
The EV parking.
Right. And so I have some drawings in that further on in my presentation, I just want to point that out, that's where they're going to be.
How tall are they going to be?
Well, I'll show you the drawings, but.
Oh, okay.
You know, the carports are typical, you know, twelve foot heights, but the tower, I want to show you that, it's it's a little taller. But I'll show you the drawings later.
Does the EV parking, that's that's where you're going to put solar panels, you said.
Right.
You're going to have chargers there as well?
Right, so there'd be EV charging stations there.
Okay.
Yeah, as well as a carport.
Quick question, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, just on on this site plan versus the one we have in our packet, is this the most updated one that we're looking at here or is the one in our packet the most updated? I just noticed that the, there's some differences in the landscaping and the ponds, the size of the ponds and some of the features that you have, so I was just curious.
Yeah, Bill came into the project kind of late in the game and the landscape architect and so this is his plan, this is the most recent plan.
This is the most recent, okay, perfect, thank you.
Mark?
Yes.
Here. I was wondering about that, the building section that will be removed, what will be left, are you leaving steel girders up above? The outdoors eating area?
Yeah, that I'll show you some pictures of that later, but so we're, there's three large steel girders running through the. Was was the bowling alley space. And we're, we're keeping those, it's sort of a relic of the old bowling alley, but also we're using it as a structural element for the outdoor dining area to create a shade. Canopy in the outdoor dining area, but but it's really to, you know, to create a kind of a dynamic architectural feature. So as you go through the building, you'll see these steel girders which will be exposed, we got to fireproof them, but they'll be exposed and. And and it'll be like a major part of the architectural theme.
Thank you.
So here's the floor plan layout. As you enter the the major part of the project, as Tony pointed out, is that. Store that will, he'll be selling his his goods and the deli will be preparing food. But he's also has plans to make it a coffee, a breakfast place too, and so there's some outdoor dining. At the entry area for for the morning hours and. And then as you go through the project, there's a, you know, large restrooms that we have connected to the outside and inside. And then on the southwest corner is a indoor bar area, but it has a lot of glass space, so it's going to feel outdoors. And then next to it, right to the north of it is a is a game room and so there'd be a large game space for various. Activities for families and and adults, pool tables and whatnot, and then above that is the indoor dining area, which is. You know, fairly small comparison to everything else, but then there'll be a. The kitchen space and then the food processing or the. Delivery of the food will come into that space, there's a, there's a walk-in refrigerator, a walk-in freezer. And also a fermentation room and so for making kombucha and things like that. And then as you go through the project, there's a in the back area where the. Half the space is. Is going to be dedicated to an outdoor dining space in the back where we have these large steel steel girders that will be exposed. And then the product will flow out into the garden area to the south. And so that's.
Can you make it clear what is like covered and indoor and what is outdoor? Because I'm not completely clear looking at that design.
Yeah, if you look at all the colored.
The brown?
Spaces, that's all the indoor space and all the gray is all the outdoor space.
I see, okay, okay.
And the girders then extend almost to the west edge of the property?
Yeah, yeah, and then they come in, they go outside and they go into the building and they'll be exposed inside the building as well.
So where is the takeout portion of the of this? That's listed, you're going to have takeout food.
Well, the deli is is.
The deli?
Pre-prepared food, yeah.
So it'll be pre-prepared, they don't, they have like a minor kitchen there or something?
There's a, there's a fairly significant kitchen right next to it there to the to the south of the dining area.
Oh, okay.
And I apologize, is the, is that that kitchen in the back, is that where the food processing is most likely going to be and the delivery? Spot is for a delivery truck that would be shipping those goods out, is that what that is?
Exactly, that's the, the food would come in from the delivery. And come in and get processed in the food processing space, there'll be packaging of the food and whatnot. And it'll go out into the store and into the deli.
So you're talking about sales of food for onsite consumption and also for offsite consumption, onsite sale for offsite consumption?
Tony didn't mention that, but I think there is a possibility that he could be. Doing offsite, you know. To other stores or other other places.
Yeah, well, the zoning of the land is pretty clear to everybody here, but the land use itself is something. That that we would like to hear about and be able to provide you with.
Yeah.
Comments on.
We were described it as food preparation for offsite sale in Parency's Deli.
That's onsite sale of food for offsite consumption?
The deli, that's what it says in the in the report, maybe they got it wrong.
Can we get Tony back?
Because that's what it, that's what we have written here.
Yeah, that that might be confusing, I think it's mostly onsite, the intention is it's mostly all onsite consumption and there might be some.
I mean, you could ride up with your bicycle or to some.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, there's no intention or plan or anything like that for selling things other than to people who come in the store. But if you come in the store, you would come in and you might buy something that you're going to eat right then and there. You might buy something that you're going to bring home and eat, or you might buy something that you're going to go home and prepare. Like for instance, if we make jams, right, we'll have jams that will be for sale there and. Someone who may come in to buy a sandwich and a salad or whatever from the deli may also buy some jam and bring home or something like that, so. We do intend to have a lot of products like that that we're developing at the farm now and that's what that big kitchen really is for. So that we can bring down all these fruits and vegetables that we're raising and have ways to, you know. Sell them, not all at the same minute when they're ripe.
Given that, two of those three purchases would be people buying something and leaving, so I assume you're going to have parking spaces that. Are just for people who are like coming in and leaving or is it just? They could just choose where they want, so there's obviously going to be short term use of parking spaces. If people just come in to buy something and leave or either the deli or food they're going to prepare.
That's a possibility that some of the spaces will be, you know, five minutes, ten minutes.
That usually affects sometimes the amount of parking you're going to have if you got.
Different types.
Turnover that are going to be.
Different types of parking for sure.
As opposed to people staying there for an hour.
Do you anticipate any online sales of food?
No, no online sales and just to comment on the previous. Notion that, you know, people would be like coming in and out like it's a grocery store, like, you know, high volume. Hey, I think that'd be, that'd be wonderful if we could establish that type of thing, but. This is not going to be the type of store that people are going to come in in order to do their family shop in, there won't be, it wouldn't be like a supermarket, a complete supermarket type of thing.
No, I wasn't thinking of that, I'm thinking if I'm, like I look at a restaurant, there's places I do it now, I think, hey, why don't we get. Get our deli sandwiches or stuff and then we'll take them home and watch a movie. So I could see.
Please do.
That kind of use would not be, and I'm going to buy my groceries for the whole season at there.
Yeah.
But or buy food you're going to prepare at home, you know.
Be a meal at a time, yeah, yeah.
And Tony, one more question on the use, is this something that you foresee at some point hosting events or or some sort of. Gatherings place?
Yeah, of course, at at some point that is absolutely part of our plan. As much as what we're showing you guys now is this robust plan for what we plan to build to, the initial opening will will likely just be the deli. And that's what we're really. the initial opening will, will likely just be the deli. And that's what we're really focused on right now. So, um, in order to, to build it out beyond that, you know, we're, it's a longer term plan for us. But we would like to be able to use that space for events if permitted.
Wedding, is that kinda? Congratulations.
It's different. Okay, uh, please go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I think we go on to the next slide. Oh, well, like, let's go to the next, this, this is a, we talked about this already, so we go to the next slide. This is a view of, of the project from, you know, at the entryway as you come to the, and the architectural theme is, is very agrarian, kind of barn-like, kind of represent the farm, kind of archetype kind of idea here. And so it's very, um, understated. Uh, Tony, you know, said he doesn't want anything fancy, wants it to feel like a farm or, you know, that sort of thing. But the materials, we have some metal siding down below and then some wood, wood board and bat above that. You know, with some metal roofing and some, um, metal or wood post and beams. So that's the, um, ba- basic architecture.
Is that part of the original, uh, steel structure sticking out of the front of the building there?
No, I'll get, I'll, I'll show that, that's not shown here in this slide.
Okay.
But I am showing it later. Go to the next slide. That's just another view of, of the, the same.
This is facing west?
Facing west, yes. And so, yeah, so this is facing Golden West. And you can see the delivery.
From, this is from Golden West.
Golden West, yeah.
Facing west.
I'm sorry, from Golden West, yes.
Okay.
Next slide. Okay, well, we already talked about all this as well. So this was part of my presentation, but these are all the various uses that, um, is being proposed on the, um, in the project. So, I think we need to talk about this further. The traffic, we did talk about the traffic study, um, a little bit, but I think that shared, you know, um, or the, um, the things that I think will mitigate, you know, the traffic that, you know, the project might create is, there is a trolley stop right at the beginning, right at the front of the project. And so that'll, you know, there is an opportunity for people to use the trolley. But there also will be the bike lanes that will be developed in the future, and we do have bike parking. And also the project is, is, um, very close to the three existing motels in that neighborhood. So people will be able to walk from those motels, you know, to.
The Compris and the Hummingbird?
Right, and.
Casa Ojai, okay.
Right, so those, those folks will, instead of getting their car and driving it down, they could, they could walk to this project.
Casa Ojai is the other one.
Right, yeah.
Can I ask you a question, Mark? If you were, didn't have a minimum parking requirement, how many parking spaces do you think this building would need?
Well, um, we, you know, we think that we're amply parked.
But you don't, if you were, if you didn't have that requirement, what, do you have any idea what you would think you would need for this business? Rather than, you know, having for maximum use, I guess it's like, that's what these old rules are about, it's like.
Yeah, we were, we were trying to balance that with, you know, instead of overparking the project and, you know, saying, okay, we're gonna have, you know, um, ample parking for any kind of event, we're, we're balancing that with the fact that we're creating this landscaped area in the front, and we're not having a parking lot. We're taking that parking lot away, and we're putting, bringing in this beautiful botanical garden in replacement of the parking. But we did, uh, we have more parking than what's on this slide. We have forty-seven, I think, on the current plan. And fifty-two, if you count the seats, but, you know, we could also, you know, reduce the seating, I think, if that was an issue. But, um, I think we're, we're well parked. We're, yeah, we just have enough, and so.
Okay.
It's okay.
Next slide. Uh, this is just a view of the garden. Now, this is not Bill's plan. Bill's plan came in later and he didn't get a rendering.
This is from the southwest corner of the property looking toward the main building?
Correct. So the, um, we're trying to convey the fact that it's gonna be a botanical garden, kind of a, um, it'll be drought tolerant plants, and Bill will talk about that, but we're trying to, it'll be like a densely, you know, kind of.
Those walkways, are they connected to the sidewalk?
No, they'll be a, it'll be enclosed in a fenced area, and you'll have to go through a kind of a controlled entry.
And what is, what's the material of the walkway there?
You know, I'll, I'll hold off on that with Bill's here. Let it, I don't want to steal his thunder there, but he's, he's got a presentation to make. And so we go to the next slide. Okay, water. I know water is a, um, a pressing issue in the valley. We're all, um, concerned about the water. And we, we wanna be as water-conscious as possible with this project. And I, I told Tony at the beginning of the project, let's make it a lead zero water project. But as we re- uh, uh, net zero water, but as we researched that, the county environmental health, um, conditions of, they're not really happy about recycling gray water, um, back into the, the project. And so we're gonna do our best though to, uh, conserve water and do underground cistern tanks. And, um, and we are planning on using, uh, the condensate water from the air conditioning to fill the water features that, that the ponds and waterfalls. And, um, and some of the other things is, um.
Mark, you mentioned the county. You get the water for Casitas, don't you? So are they the ones that do the rules? What rules are saying you can't do?
Recycling the gray, recycling the gray water, yeah.
Who's making that rule?
Health Department.
County Health Department, wow.
So they, they're, right now they're allowing you to use, um, your, um, your laundry, uh, to gray, as a gray water supply into your, um, gardens.
Uh-huh.
And so we're hoping to twist our arms and, and make some headway with them and, and get more. Maybe even the dish water, um, from the project, use that as a gray water, uh, source. Um, but we're not sure. So we haven't got, we haven't, we haven't got to that point yet.
It seems to me that we have technology now that you can almost make any water potable if you have the right system. And we ought to be going in that direction.
That, you know, we, we wanna do that, you know, to a certain extent, and then what's allowed by code.
Uh, Tony, just a quick question on the water feature in the water, uh, the proposed ponds and creek. Um, obviously Ojai gets hot in the summer, and, uh, you most likely will have kids running around there. Is there any thought on how you might keep the kids out of the gray water system like that? Cause obviously county health might have concerns with people drinking that water, people putting their face in there and that sort of thing.
Yeah, there would never be gray water exposed to the, to the public like that. Uh, water that would be in there would be collected, would be collected from rain or the aquifer that's right there or something. And, you know, these are proposals. We're not, we're not like, nothing's written in stone. But I mean, like pools of gray water is nothing that we're, would ever do.
No, I, I would say as you guys move forward with the project, because this will obviously be a, a topic, a topic and a talking point, uh, make sure you just have a very robust plan for this and how you guys envision it. Um, I do love the idea of a net zero water goal. Um, I don't know if that's possible with something like this, according to, you know, county venture, health department, et cetera. Um, but I do love the attempt. Um, so I would say just, you know, be as robust as you can be in this, in the water feature and the plan around that.
Yeah, one of the, um, methods of getting to net zero water is recycling the gray water into the toilet water. And so that's, I think that the Health Department, I think, you know, is really reluctant to allow that to happen.
Yeah, they'd be okay with that, yeah, yeah.
But we're, we're gonna try our best to get as much as we can, and so.
Okay, appreciate the effort.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Right. Um, and then I, um, we're, again, we're trying to be as sustainable as possible. Uh, and with the project, uh, we're gonna try to recycle as, as many of the materials as possible. And the existing structure, there, the whole structure, um, is, um.
It's concrete block, isn't it?
Well, the, the walls are concrete block on the, on the north and west side. But, uh, the roof is a, is this two by twelve rafters in a beautiful shape. Ra- you know, there, we could salvage those rafters and we can rebuild the whole entire building with those two by twelve. That's our plan, is to rebuild the building with, with the existing lumber that's on site and, and reuse the existing slab that's there now. And then, um.
What, what will the floor of the outdoor dining area be?
Uh, we're not sure, but I, I think it might be concrete.
I mean, is it a concrete floor there now, or is it?
Yes, there is existing floor there now, but Tony has an idea of putting like a heating system underneath the floor, but, uh.
Let's remove it first.
Yeah, we're still, we're still, you know, that's still in the development stage as well.
Okay.
Well, let me congratulate you on reusing so much of the building, because we know embodied energy in a building.
Yeah.
Is probably as much as the entire use of that building will ever. Yes, and so it's a great thing to have, push that, cause I'm really in favor of that sort of thing.
Yeah, my next slide kind of demonstrates.
Your, your slide here says you have a solar array that provides a hundred percent of the electrical use?
Yeah, so that's our goal.
Talk a little bit about that.
That's our, that's our goal, is to, is to have a solar system with, with, you know, solar power that will offset, you know, the electrical use of the project.
Where will the solar power panels be?
Well, and, and one of my slides will have the solar carport, but it'll also be on the roof of the structure.
Okay.
So, um, on, there's a parapet.
So this, this metal roof is gonna have solar panels on it?
Yes, or it'll be, there's a parapet structure in the back. We'll, you know, we'll have our, hide our, you know, kitchen equipment and condensate or the, um, air conditioning equipment, but there'll also be room for solar panels along the north side.
Okay.
So this talks about the, um, what Jeffrey just pointed out is, is how much embodied carbon savings there is in salvaging and reusing the existing structure. Now, this, this is not our project specific, this is in general. But I think it, it's a good thing to note in the future for other projects too. Whenever you can salvage an existing structure, you're gonna, you know, it's, it's about, you know, two to three times, um, reduction in, in the embodied carbon, the structure.
Okay.
Okay, then, yeah, here, um, you can see now, this is from the outdoor dining area and the, um, the steel girders that are gonna be exposed. And we are showing some solar panels over that, but, you know, um, I think Tony would, would rather have some canvas, um, shade, um, awnings that would, that would, um, span the, uh, the steel girders there in the outdoor dining. But, um, this, this is showing the dynamics of exposing those steel girders.
So this is the west side of the proposed building facing south?
Exactly, yes. Okay, now, uh, onto this, um, so this is kind of a late entry. But, um, we have a couple of proposals to qual- we're hoping to qualify for the, um, the public art, um, submission. And I know it's not in your preview, it's the Art Commission that decides on this, but we're hoping to propose this energy tower in the front of the project that I pointed out earlier. And so the idea of the energy tower is, um, use solar, solar energy to raise a, a heavy weight up in the air and, you know, with motors, but the solar power pushes it up in the air. And then at night or in emergencies, that's used as your storage for energy. It comes back down and it generates electricity, you know, through, you know, the, um, the motors. And so this is our proposal. This, this one's thirty-five feet tall, that would be on that, um, corner of the parking lot. And so.
Before or after you raise the tower?
Uh, I don't understand.
The thirty-five foot height?
That's, that's the top, yeah, to the very top.
Okay.
Which is the max, I guess.
Yeah, there, there's also an opportunity made to drill down too, and maybe get some, some gravity under the ground.
Light show at night, if we drive by or something. That's your art?
It'll be like a Burning Man kind of experience, yeah.
Oh, okay.
How, how big is the, the rectangle on the top of that?
It's a twelve by twelve space for about, it'd be about, you know, a, um, a half a dozen, uh, solar panels up there.
So you're using solar power to lift a weight?
Yes, so it'd be.
And then at night, you drop the weight and the potential energy converts back into electricity?
Right. And so it also could be stored, like you, you have it come down partway and you can leave the rest for emergency, you know, backup energy.
So when you come back, you're gonna show us what this would look like on the night, so we can have a sense of.
If you guys like the idea and Art Commission likes the idea, there is an architect who is doing this all over the world that I can, you know, consult with. And, you know, and knows more.
So he's done different models of this, different designs of the same thing?
Yeah, yeah. They're mostly doing off-grid sites where, you know, they don't have, um, the grid power. And so at night, they need, they need power. And so this is, instead of having a generator or batteries, you're using gravity to, um, store the energy.
So we could look at all his different designs and pick one?
Sure, if you like, yeah.
That stored potential energy though, that's, that's not the one hundred percent of your electrical need.
No.
This is, this is an entertainment feature, if you will.
Yeah, I think it's more of a demonstration thing.
Because one of your earlier charts said you had a solar panel array that provides a hundred percent of your electrical use.
That's what, yeah, so that would be on the.
You must have a humongous battery somewhere, because the sun isn't out at night.
Well, yeah.
A lot of your business will be at night.
Well, that's true. So the way Edison works is that you put the power back into the grid and they keep, they keep track of that, and then as you use it.
Okay, so it's net zero?
Yeah, so it's net zero. So at night, you're using it, but it's, it's, it's your overall, you know, electric use has to balance out with the energy that you make during the day.
Is that, is the tower on the southeast corner of Golden West and Ojai Avenue?
No, it'd be on the, um, there, I pointed out earlier, but it's on the, um, as you come into the parking lot, there's the, um, the carports, which we, is the next slide. And then right after the carports to the, to the, um, east, there's a, there's a planner area that's located there, yeah.
There, okay.
So the one that's like between the cars, that now, it's got, it's got greenery, so it's, okay, okay.
So these, this is our concept. It's a concept only, but it's a concept for a, a solar carport. So instead of making the, the things that we see out in front of the, um, city hall today and other places, and I commend the city for doing such a thing, but we wanna make it artistic and make it attractive looking. I, I know, I feel those look very industrial and, and, um, there's not much, um, architectural attractiveness to them. So we're, we're looking to do like an artistic kind of expression to the solar.
How tall is that thing gonna be?
I think we have it at about.
No, that's the other one.
Twelve feet tall.
Twelve feet tall.
This is just the carport.
So that carport, that wet round thing, where would it be in the parking area, between the lot?
Yeah, so it, it's shown there on the, um, side plan. There's some, there's some wide spaces in between. Um, and there would also be a charging station for the EV.
I see.
To go in, in that island there as well.
And that would be how, how, what's the dimensions of the roof?
It's about twenty by twenty.
Twenty by twenty, okay.
Okay, so that covers two parking spaces for each array?
Yeah, so each one would have two spaces.
I see, so four spaces, okay, okay.
I don't know if it, if it, um, works into your plan or not. But the sanitary district has just put in, um, a battery array where they'll charge the batteries at night and then run the plant on the stored electricity during the day. And, uh, so they're buying electricity cheap and not using electricity when it's more expensive during the day. You might think about it.
Okay, I'm taking, I got my, um, my intern here.
Always gotta have an engineer and a whiteboard.
And then, um, I think Tony pointed out, uh, the, one of the green aspects is the locally grown food, um, being locally delivered and, and it's not, it's not part of the, you know, statewide network, but it's gonna be a very, um, locally, um.
It's fresher.
Yeah, uh, as far as distribution. And then the, the added trees to the project were, were, um, Bill will point out, we're, we're proposing a, an enormous amount of new trees to be added.
There aren't any in the parking lot now, so it's all.
And then finally, this project's been vacant for, you know, over twenty years. And it's been, you know, a blight to our community. And so we're, we're hoping, I think this, this is the project that Tony's really grabbed onto of all the previous proposals. The hotel proposal, I think he did entertain affordable housing. This is one he's really grabbed onto. And so we're hoping for this to go forward and finally to remove the blighted condition that's there. It's the existing, um, blighted condition.
I'm curious, uh, what, what you are envisioning as, as the operation of the restaurant? Cause it, it looks like the indoor seating is a lot smaller than the outdoor. because it, it looks like the indoor seating is a lot smaller than the outdoor seating.
Yeah.
Um, but is this a breakfast, lunch, and dinner kind of operation, or are you?
Tony, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm, I think I am.
We can hear you.
Our, our goal would be to be open fairly long hours, but not, I don't think of it as being a traditional breakfast, lunch, dinner place, it's more of a deli-type atmosphere where this very similar food would be available in the morning as would be available in the evening.
Okay. It's part of the land use, thank you, thank you.
All right, so, um, the next slide is a, a landscape pan- excuse me, landscape plan, Bill Malley is here to present that for you, thank you.
It does look different from what we have. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey.
I'm Bill Mellett, I'm the landscape architect on the project, thank you for having me here, and, um, look forward to telling you a little bit about this project and, um, if there are any questions you may have. First, I do wanna talk about the water aspect of this, because I know that's a big issue with landscapes now in Ojai. I've lived in Ojai for about thirty years now, um, been a landscape architect here, a landscape contractor. One of the things I wanna do with this garden, it's a little different and I think it's the way we need to go in the future is, when we've landscaped in the past, we've created, designed a landscape, built a landscape, and then thought about the water that's gonna be used to irrigate that landscape. Now I think we need to think about how much water do we have and then go into the landscape design, so it's kind of a flipping of the design principles of sustainability by first seeing what we have in designing to that instead of creating a design and then trying to, uh, fill the needs of those plants, so. One thing we'll do at, at the beginning is a study of how much gray water, um, rainwater capture is available, condensate, just all the water sources that are available to us and how much water that's gonna provide, and then design the landscape around that instead of the other way, putting it in a landscape and then seeing, you know what, we don't have enough water to sustain this, because I think we all are realizing that there's gonna be less water going forward.
No, no sense designing the landscape twice?
Yes, um, so, I mean, we've seen that with our lawns, they're gone, you know, so we don't wanna design a landscape and install a landscape that we can't sustain, um, and there is a lot of opportunity with gray water, there, I, just because I know a little bit more about that than, on the other side, gray water cannot be used for edible plant material and cannot be used on the surface, but there is, uh, use for subsurface irrigation is basically how gray water has to be applied per the county code. So, any plant material that is not edible will be irrigated with gray water and rain capture water and condensate, so, I just wanted to address that, uh, water needs. This project's also, uh, increased the permeable, um, portion of the property significantly, so previously this property was one hundred percent impervious, or close to it, ninety percent. I haven't done the calculations, but I'd say that we're, uh, decreasing that by forty percent, so, the other thing is, all water that comes onto the site from rain will stay on this site and be infiltrated into the site, so there's significant water capture there that was before being put to the street into our stormwater system, so benefits should be significant there.
Can I ask a question about that?
Mm-hmm.
Looking, of course, I'm looking at the one that we were given, that's a pretty big, long, uh, impervious surface there for the parking space.
The parking lot is impervious as currently thought about, it may become permeable.
Have you thought about the permeable?
Yes, and that's a cost thing that unfortunately.
I would certainly recommend that, but.
Yeah.
It seems to me it would be difficult to completely contain all the water because at the front of this.
Downhill is to the south.
Yes, so.
Downhill is to the south, so, uh, where you drive in on Ojai Avenue and then, um, I don't know what the, the slope is on that, uh, Golden West Avenue, but there's two big open areas where water could just run off.
You, you talked about underground cisterns?
Yes, potentially, so we do wanna do rain capture.
Along Ojai Avenue where everything collects?
If you look up in the back, uh, let's see, that would be the north.
Northwest.
Corner, there's three tanks back up in there.
Uh-huh.
One for rain capture, one for gray water, and then there's also aquaponics potential, uh, element to this project also that Tony might speak about. But we do, be doing bioswales in the, uh, parking strip between the parking lot and the street to capture water, any runoff off the parking lot, and also water off the parking lot would be redirected into a bioswale that kind of runs through the middle of the project, and that's where you'll see the, looks like a dry stream bed running through the project, that would be, yes, would be for rain capture there.
Okay.
That greenery, is that a lawn or what is that?
No, that, so that would probably, that potentially could be synthetic turf right there, and that's a play area for.
I see.
Admitt and kids playing, that kind of thing.
Bocce.
Bocce.
You're gonna replace bowling with bocce.
There also.
Is that permeable?
Yes.
The new synthetics are permeable, that's good stuff. Okay.
So can I ask, uh, 'cause I did have this question, I'm a bicyclist.
Yes.
I'm coming down, uh, East Ojai Avenue from my home in Miners Oaks, and I made a little ride through town.
Sure.
And I decide I'm gonna eat there with my wife, we're gonna have a good time. How do I get into that place and park without having to navigate cars backing up and running into me?
So there is a, a sidewalk pathway coming from Ojai Avenue, ye- yes, right there, comes up, goes all along the edge outside the parking, and then there's bicycle parking right where the cursor is right now.
So you, you don't mind people riding their bikes over at the same place that people would walk?
Well.
That, that's, uh.
Yeah.
That can be really hazardous.
Yeah, and there's, we're thinking about that because one thing we are seeing is more people on e-bikes are really.
And that's even worse, because you got tourists on e-bikes that don't know how to slow them down or anything.
So we're getting a lot more traffic with that.
Middle of the parking lot, yeah.
We are definitely thinking about.
So I think that needs to be seriously addressed, that, you know, um, you know, maybe rather than coming in the front, if, well, if you had, if you had bike racks in the front somewhere, you could just stop your bike there, or go around to the side avenue and come in the side and there'd be bike racks so you don't have to.
So we may have back racks at the front and inside, but people now with the, the expensive bikes are hesitant to leave their bikes far away from where they're sitting, it seems, so.
Well, then, then going around, uh, the, whatever, Golden West Avenue and coming there, that would be, everyone would see them, nobody's gonna steal a bike there.
Right.
They should have, they should have locks anyway, though, to have expensive bikes, but anyway.
Let's, let's let the man talk about the landscape.
Um, we want this to be a demonstration garden for water-saving and sustainable gardening. We're gonna be, it'll, it will have a very high efficiency irrigation system compared to what we used to use, spray irrigation, drip irrigation's very efficient, um, and it's a, a community-serving garden also, um, there's a lot of opportunities for young children and families to spend time here in the garden, um, which I think is, Ojai really doesn't have that right now, a, a really outdoor area for whole families to come from, very young kids to adults, so.
They would be there to observe it, not to participate in the gardening, I assume?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, like Tony was saying, we are gonna have a lot of edible plants, a lot of gardens that are kind of, uh, would, um, teach about what plants can be grown in the Ojai, um, area and, uh, showcasing some of the edible plants that they're serving inside.
Since you have a play area and you have this educational garden and you've got these educational art exhibits, seems like it'd be a good place to invite school classes to.
Yeah, I think it would be.
You know, and have a little, you know, eatery and be taught a little bit about the science of, uh, energy conservation.
Absolutely.
And, uh, soils and so forth, so, I think it's a, be a great idea.
In landscape architecture, we need more landscape architectures coming out.
We need more landscape architects, are you kidding me? I thought everybody was one.
Is that?
That, that.
You wrapped?
I'm wrapped, any questions?
Okay.
Oh, there was a question about the pathway material, most likely decomposed granite or gravel, but I think decomposed granite.
Granite, yeah, the granite's easier on wheelchairs.
Yeah.
Okay.
There will be, uh, it will be ADA accessible all through the garden.
P gravel's tough in a wheelchair. Okay? Any other questions for the applicant, John, Trent, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, just one, or actually two, um, the aquaponic tank, uh, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Tony, if you're still here, could probably.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yep.
So, uh, we have, on our farm, we've started experimenting with aquaponics, um, for, just so everyone knows what that means, that's basically you have a, uh, what we use is a three-tank system, where one tank, where we're raising fish, one we're raising stocky vegetables, and one we're raising leafy vegetables, and, um, is a very highly efficient, uh, very clean way to produce fish protein and also other, uh, vegetables, and it's something that we're looking at potentially doing, uh, onsite. Uh, the, the majority of the, of that activity would happen at the farm, but again, we're trying to do things, examples of what we can do.
Right, oh, that's cool, and then, uh, second question on the splash pad, um, is that gonna be using the, the rainwater that's in the creek or is that using some other water?
So that would be from condensate, would be the, uh, source of the evaporative water that would occur from that possibly, that's what we're looking.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you very well, I apologize.
That, that water would come from the evaporative, uh, cooling systems.
Oh, the, okay, the cool, okay, gotcha, from the, from the air conditioners and
In refrigeration units.
And then that would be safe that somebody could drink?
Say that again, sorry.
Well, I, I guess the purpose of the splash pad is that for cooling, is that for kids to play in?
To play with, as an amenity for the children.
Okay, so if water got in their mouth or something like that, it's not like a biohazard, right?
It's potable water.
Condensate's clean.
Potable water, okay.
It's as clean as it's gonna be, yeah. Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah.
Any other applicants or applicant representatives? All right, then we'll close that part and we do have time now to open the public hearing. I have cards from two people who wish to speak. Uh, first up is Bill Miley.
Got three now.
I have all my answers, all my questions answered.
Terrific, okay.
Wow. You must done a good job.
First time ever. Because Bill always has good questions. Uh, Vivian and Rick Chanel, Shinelli?
Lots of people.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I, um, my wife and I are the property owners of the directly adjacent to the, uh, directly adjacent to the old bowling alley.
You're on the other side of the wall.
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, two oh one Golden West.
Yeah, okay.
And, um, I'm proposing and requesting a, um, we're concerned about sound, we have a lovely little zen garden of a house, uh, right next door, and we're con- we're, uh, very concerned about noise.
Sure, nothing quieter than an empty lot.
Yes. But, uh, you know, we're, uh, we're, we're hopeful that, uh, our request can be met, but I'm proposing and I've drawn out by myself and I have sent a copy to, uh, to Tony, and I can provide you with a copy.
Please give it to staff, that'll be.
Sure.
Part of the next round.
Sure, um.
A soft copy would be great if you could send it.
Yes, I would do that also. Uh, I'm proposing a, um, minimum eight-foot-high sound wall.
Turn the timer on?
A eight-foot-high sound wall, um, and the, uh, positioning of it is better seen on a, on a picture.
What is it currently now, six?
Uh, there's no sound wall, uh, well, the building itself is, is part of the separation from our property, but beyond.
What's at the back of your property, there's no wall there?
No, we have a chain-link fence.
Ah.
On our property, on our property, we also have, uh, screening by bamboo, um, tufts of, of bamboo along the property line.
Okay.
Um, so there's not a lot of noise, um, depletion going on from, uh, you know, from the parking lot to our place, so I'm proposing that, that eight-foot-high wall running along our property line with a, with an easement, uh, the wall would, uh, go, uh, parallel with the existing building, and again, a picture says more than I can probably describe, but, uh.
Are you volunteering some of your own property for a wall or?
No, the, the wall would entirely be on the, on the new project side.
Okay.
And there's like a, well, I think it's a four-foot-wide easement, which would provide, um, maintenance for their outside of the building and maintenance for us to trim bushes and things on our side.
So you want this wall four feet from your property line, is that what you're suggesting?
I'm sorry?
You want the wall four feet from your property line?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it'll extend all the way to the street, although the closer you get to the street, I understand there's probably a, a restriction as far as height goes, uh, I don't know what that is, but, um, basically it's a sound wall.
So what is a sound wall?
Sound wall is basically whatever the, um, the architect or the owner comes up with, block, cinder block.
Something that, okay, so you don't really care what the structure of it is?
No, as long as, I mean, it's, it's, it's has to be reasonably good-looking, I mean, uh, it'd be nice not to have, it'd be nice to have it textured or painted or something like that, um, and, uh.
Bamboo on the outside.
What's that?
No, that's a joke, sorry.
Okay, uh, also, we're concerned about the, any kind of air conditioning noise or evaporative cooler noise, that would be, uh, I don't know where that's gonna be positioned at this time.
I think Morris said any equipment like that would be screened.
Okay, great.
It's a normal, normal requirement?
Well, there's, uh, visual screening that I, that I was talking about, but also there is, um, uh, noise ordinance within our, our code.
Yeah.
That limits the, uh, the noise.
Is there a height requirement on fences?
I'm sorry?
Is there a height requirement on fences?
It's typically six feet.
I thought it was six feet.
Six feet.
Right.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Hello, I'm this gentleman's wife, my name is Vivian Shinelli, nice to meet all of you. My concern also beside the noise was the issue about parking, it, it seems like this is a day event, that, you know, when people come and they go to the, I, I was curious about the beach area, I'm not sure if I understood correctly enough about what those two water, um, features are, but I, I see families coming, which is great, and, um, I just maybe see people who are staying for a long period of time, maybe parking on, starting to park and creep up on, um, Golden West, so it's just, just a thought I have about what the parking's gonna look like on Golden West when, um, when people come and spend a lot of time at, at the, uh, location, and that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Question for the planner, um, there, along that property line, there is no parking spaces on Golden West, this, what I saw.
Are you talking about street parking?
There's no.
Yeah, there's no parking along that.
There's no painted street parking, I don't know if there's any.
That road's not wide enough, I don't think you could even have parking spaces there, could you?
I'd, I'd have to look into that, I don't think there is, but.
But I mean, I went out and looked at it, it's just, it's a fairly narrow road, I was looking, 'cause.
Yeah, people park there.
So. It says no parking. Well, I mean, that can be enforced, because when I was there, there was nobody parking.
Another, another code compliance issue.
Okay, well, I have to get complacent.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Cindy Swallows.
Good evening. My address is 1121 Sunny Glen, and I actually have the largest part of the property that this is going to be affecting. And I totally agree with Rick that we need a nice, tall, eight-foot wall for privacy and sound blocking. And I, and as Vivian stated, I was concerned about the air conditioning noise, hearing that in my backyard. But if that's going to be in some type of building or something, screen or something to help, that'd be great. I have another question, though, and we were talking about the hours. What are the hours going to exactly be of this place?
Sounded like it was.
Nine to ten, nine to midnight, two to five, what?
Details of that sort come when, when an applicant is looking for a design review permit. This is simply a concept right now, and, and the applicant is looking for feedback from the commission and from the community. So if, if there are things that you'd like to see them do, or see them not do, this is the time to talk about it.
All right, good. So I'd like to know about the hours. I'd like that to be considered. Music. Also, I heard there was a possibility of music. If there's going to be music, I'd like to know what kind of music, the hours of the, the music will be playing. I'm assuming by 10 o'clock, there would be no more music, because you are in a neighborhood, you do back up to a neighborhood. Another thing I noticed, Mark, the dining, outdoor dining, it looks like a lot of those tables go right up to supposedly the wall. Am I correct there? I think, I, I would, I think we would all appreciate it if the dining could move, be moved back farther away from the wall, there where we would be, so we wouldn't hear people talking and whatever. And people to have a tendency to, like, look over the fence as we're in our own backyard, enjoying our, our yards. Oh, and the events, I would like to bring up that, too. That kind of makes me nervous of what kind of events would be there. Once again, you do back up to a neighborhood, and so I'd like to be informed of what kind of events they're talking about there.
That's part of land use, and that would be something we would expect to hear from the applicant when they come back with a more definitive plan.
Good, okay, perfect, thank you. And I guess that's basically about it. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your opinions.
Since you were giving input about hours, what, as neighbors, would you suggest the hours should be?
Uh, no later than 10 o'clock. And if it's a breakfast place, you know, I'm okay, 8 o'clock. If it's just lunch, dinner, I mean, 11 to 10, you know.
So 10 o'clock's your nighttime one, okay?
At least, yeah.
That's when the noise ordinance chops down.
That's what, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Gabriel Riley?
Howdy, thanks for having me. I live at 1117 Sunny Glen Avenue, so right next door to Cindy. And my property abuts the bowling alley, so it's essentially the northwest corner of the bowling alley lot. My property is catty-corner to that. And first of all, I think it's a really cool project, so, and I'd love to see it happen. That bowling alley is, is certainly a blight, and the, the ideas put forward are really thoughtful and pretty cool. A lot of thought obviously went into things like how we manage water, how we manage electricity, how we're landscaping, parking, bicycles, which is wonderful. But one of the things the city first pointed out about this project is the consideration that this is adjacent to a residential community. Nothing in the proposal and the concept from the developer addressed the residential considerations at all. There was a slide on water, there was a slide on artistic solar structures, all, all very cool, but I think the, the ask would be much more consideration around, around the community impacts. So in particular, noise, the issues that Cindy mentioned, I would agree with. The other thing I would add is light. So additionally adjacent to my property, I'm right behind the ranger station, and there's a significant amount of light pollution that comes off the ranger station at all hours of the night. They don't turn off their lights. In fact, their lights go into my, shine into my property. There's nothing the city can do about that. It's federal lands, federal property, but noise, or rather, light pollution is a significant issue. Knowing that the restaurant in the outdoor area is in that northwest corner of the lot, that's going to create potentially a lot of light, and so I'd like some additional thought given, given to that. And then the final notion would be around sightlines. So there's a proposed 35-foot-tall tower, which sounds cool and artistic, but obviously that has an impact on the sightlines of the adjacent properties in the community. That's a pretty, pretty tall structure, obviously interesting. But those would be the considerations I'd ask for some more thought and exploration from the team on, would be noise, sightlines, and then light as well. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And Maura, perhaps you could just give us 25 words or less on what the light standards are these days?
The ordinance would require that, that all lights be facing down. We have a dark sky community, is that what it's called, dark sky?
Dark sky.
Yeah.
Ordinance, and so, and you would be seeing a, you would be seeing lighting as part, as part of the DRP.
Yeah, the light, the light, as I understand it, not only has to be directed downward, but be directed away from adjacent properties.
Yes, and strictly downwards, not just, not down and out, but down, right. So not, not glowing.
I wonder if the town should be talking to the Forest Services, any way they can mitigate this light pollution. Do they really need?
Hardly ever even see anyone there. I don't know.
Yeah, I was wondering.
We've tried. They've done some, some things to mitigate it, but.
Would you like our help?
Hold on, that's a different, separate subject.
Different.
But certainly, I'm.
We're talking about the concept of the project tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Renee Briggs?
Hello, everyone, and thanks for getting us all together on this. I live at 408 Golden West, and I'm here because I didn't, none of us in my part of old Golden West received any notice of what's going on.
I think it's 300 feet from the property line.
Okay, okay, but we should have, because of cars coming into Golden West from Ojai Avenue, and I see where there's an entrance and an exit on Golden West, which is going to kind of impede our traffic situation. Plus, we have islands going up Golden West right at that point where the driveway is going to be, and there's some wonderful little oak trees growing there. So that's going to change the aesthetics of the entryway into Golden West. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of what's going to happen on the street there.
Yeah, I saw the, I saw the.
Otherwise, it's a wonderful, wonderful project.
I saw the driveway, and I just figured anybody who came out that way would have to turn right and go down to Ojai Avenue.
It looks like it's just going to be out, an exit. If it was an exit, just an exit, I think I would be okay with it, but it looks like it's going to be entering and exiting. And that poses a problem. Delivery trucks.
Yeah, that's, that's where delivery trucks would come in, sure.
Right.
Okay.
So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this issue? All right, then we're going to close the public comment portion of this concept review, and maybe one, run one more time around, around to all the commissioners. Mr. Trent, any last thoughts for the applicant?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to congratulate the applicant on putting together a very sustainable project, very thoughtful, and I love the, the water usage, the net zero aspects of the project, and just the, the attention to detail and the concern over, you know, setting a, a good example for the rest of the community with sustainability. I, I love that. I do, I do like the idea of, as, when the applicant comes back, or when they come back, addressing the noise. I like the sound wall concept, and then obviously, we'll, we'll get into the light and the down sky, you know, as the project moves forward, to see what kind of lighting fixtures are, are going to be leveraged, and then also with the business hours, etcetera. But overall, I'm very happy to see this thing moving forward in the way it is. I, I really like it.
Terrific. Judy?
I, too, would like to congratulate the applicants. The concept is, is wonderful. I really like the landscaping. The permeability is important to me, so if the driveway can be permeable, that would be awesome, or perhaps slanted enough to somehow capture rainwater. I'm sure that would help with the zero, you know, there's probably some way to do that. Anyway, I look forward to seeing the next design review plan.
Jerry?
Uh, yes, I too think it's a, a great project. I really like the idea that the food they're serving is actually being grown here, which I really think adds to the sustainability aspect of it. And of course, I want them to address the, how bikes are going to get in there in a safe way. I don't think, my experience is that you can't have walking and wheelchairs and bikes on the same path. It's just not practical from a safety standpoint, and particularly with the young kids with these e-bikes that go flying through. We see them in downtown arcade, actually. I would hope, this is just maybe for us, or that when it actually gets a formal proposal, that we have some ability to put out more wider information to the community that this is going to come up.
Well, a design review permit request is going to have a lot more detail.
I don't mean that. I meant the timing, so that the public hears about this. You know, because we get our agendas on Friday, newspaper comes out on Friday, they can't put it in there. So if there's any way we could let people know, not the details, but that this is going to be at this, you know, that this thing is coming up, and you could go on, online on Friday, you know, and look up what the plan was.
Actually, it's in the newspaper a week, a week before the Friday, before the meeting.
So yes, so go ahead and subscribe to the newspaper, so you can keep track of it.
The newspaper, and also, was it Renee?
Yes.
You didn't receive notification? We'll be including you as a part of the notification moving forward. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. These are our two newest commissioners, so I'm sort of the senior tonight, or the old toad, or something. I've been on the commission for six years now, and I've seen, this is at least the third plan in, in a concept review form for this property. And I'm really hoping that, that something good comes out of this. I think it's a great plan that you have so far. I think we still need to learn more about how it's going to operate and, and what sort of traffic you anticipate, at what times of the day, depending on whether your deli's open from early morning till late at night, or it's just open late in the day, or whatever, to, to get a better feel for what the traffic and the parking requirements really are. But the rest of your goals are very laudable, in, in terms of gray water, in terms of water capture on the, on the property, the bioswales, all of those things that we're starting to see around town, some of it on city property, some on private, that, that will make use of whatever pitiful little rain we have. But the overall design, I think, is very attractive. One thing I didn't see in any of your drawings was where the solar panels, other than the parking spaces and the tower feature, are going to be. Because I found the, the metal roof on the main building to be quite attractive. It may be differently attractive, or less so, I don't know, if you cover the main roof of the building with solar panels. But if you plan to have them, they should be on the next set of, of elevations. Other than that, I think it's, I think it's a very good-looking project, and I would look forward to having it spruce up the east end of town, by all means. Thank you very much for, for what you have shown us tonight. Anything else? Great. Let's move on, then, to.
Take a break, but.
I'm sorry? Ah, okay. We'll declare a five-minute recess here. Pardon me? Well, in the kitchen. There's cold water in the kitchen. Oh, yes. Getting dry. I think, I think the limit's six feet unless they get a variance. Another thing that, that these people could consider, I should have mentioned it, they could just put a row of cypress trees across the back. Oh, okay.
Sometimes I have to go to the bathroom.
I think everybody does occasionally.
Yeah, no, but I used to be able to hold much longer, but.
Oh.
Okay, oh, this is nice. What is this? What kind of water is this? Looks really like something good.
It's, it smells good, so I don't think it's out of a well here.
It's not gray water.
Is this from you? Is this your?
Pass it on over to Sherry.
Well, he must have done a good job of asking questions, because Bill Miley didn't have any.
Well, I think that was, it was great. He always has good questions.
He does, yeah.
We asked a bunch of them, and, and the written communications that we had with you picked a lot of other nits, but I think what we covered here was probably sufficient. We can, oh, another one?
You're going to see the PowerPoint?
My apologies.
And that.
The microphones are still on.
I guess when he comes back, but.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item five, Planning Commission appointment to the Committee to Approve Public Art, Kappa.
Right.
Talk, talk to us about it.
So, we are a part of Kappa. Kappa is the, kind of the subcommittee to the art, to the Arts Commission, and we had a commissioner, who is no longer on the commission, who served Kappa. So now we need to fill that void moving forward. And this helps to, really to kind of fill that gap for, for this subcommittee to the, to the Arts Commission, so. They only meet, just, just so all four of you are aware, they only meet at Will. They don't necessarily have scheduled meetings, so it really just depends on.
Like the Building Appeals Board, when necessary?
When necessary, as projects come up, absolutely. So just, oh, no, that's not going to be a, a commitment. I think in my time here, there's been maybe a half a dozen of these meetings, so it's.
That's in three years?
Three years I've been here, yeah, sorry.
Pretty good schedule.
So if you have an interest in that, I certainly encourage you to volunteer yourself. If, I can't remember the last time when we had this, it seemed like no one was volunteering, and it was voluntold.
I would volunteer if no one else wants to. I would volunteer if no one else wants to.
So.
That's good for me. I'm, I'm already busy with, uh,
I'm not going to fight you for it.
The sanitary board and a couple of charities, so.
It would be interesting.
Yeah.
To meet artists, see the art.
Do we need?
Certainly welcoming.
A motion and a roll call on an appointment? Or would a voice vote suffice?
I think a voice vote would suffice.
Okay.
And it would be for a two-year term. So identifying that from, from this point forward, it would be for a two-year term and we'd put that on our calendar and then re, reevaluate in two years.
Okay.
Yep, and we, yeah. Be reflected in the minutes.
All in favor then of having Mr. Starkweather be our planning commission representative to Kappa? Signify by saying aye. Aye? And those opposed, nay?
Wow, that's the first time I've ever had a unanimous vote for anything.
It's unanimous.
There we go.
Very good. Item six on the agenda, priorities of the planning commission and community development department. Have we crossed anything off this week? No such luck.
I will admit, we, this is a standing item on the agenda. So it's more like a, let's check in, um, in terms of what's going on with these various uh, items. And I have a bit of, of good news that I heard today. And, um, first I want to go through, really, I think it's probably a couple, maybe one or two of them. The formula business ordinance, that's going before council at July, on the July 12th. So you'll be seeing that on the agenda.
Next week.
Uh huh. Um, and that we're, uh, staff's recommending that we continue the moratorium to the last phase so that this, this really the business community as well as the planning commission can weigh in and provide, uh, recommendations, appropriate recommendations regarding this.
We had, when we voted, we had asked about two things, I think. One was about the definition of retail and the other was, I forgot.
But we were worried about the, um,
There were two things.
Definition of, uh,
Collective.
Collective marketing.
Collective marketing. Collective marketing was pulled out of it, right? Um, and the re, it was the retail aspect, um, and, and having that kind of pooled into its own kind of ordinance.
So that you, when you, once, when it gets presented to the city council, it's going to be at the general stage discussion like we had? And then they come back to us for an actual?
Yeah, and
Ordinance.
For the, for the moratorium to continue, it requires a four-fifths vote, so.
For them to decide.
Correct, to continue.
Yeah, I, I'm curious about that though. There's a moratorium, so it doesn't matter what the definition of a formula business is if we're not allowing any.
Although they. Well, we are allowing a narrow, um, margin. So it's, it, the number's been reduced. And then we kind of talked about this before. So the number's been reduced and so has the, the, the criteria. So we've acted, we've added the collective marketing aspect to it as well.
But also someone can file for.
But those things are not, those things are not defined in the municipal code.
Through the moratorium as a temporary ordinance, they are. I think that, that's, that's the critical piece. I, I don't want to get into the details of this again, but just know that formula business is being continued before, and brought before the, the city council at their next meeting. They'll make that determination as, as to whether or not to continue that more.
That's been in operation for a year. Nobody has applied for an exception or whether that thing is where you can, if you are one, you can still apply to be.
To go through the CUP process. No. No.
Okay.
That, that whole issue of how many sites are considered on an online ad? Whether it's all just going to be one physical site equal to one physical site versus multiple sites if multiple stores are advertised? Is that going to get cleared up?
I think that's the collective marketing piece.
You're going to be working.
But remember, that's, that's carved out of what the, what the council's looking at. This, this body has asked for more information on that.
Okay.
And we'll see if there's, if there's traction from council's perspective.
Having an online presence be an additional store. Remember that?
Yeah.
Someone was proposing that and we voted against that.
Right. So that's formula business. The, so there's some, some traction on title 10. Um, just know that that's not necessarily something that, there's several items that this body made recommendations over a year ago now. And there's some traction on getting that to, to council in the very near future. The, the kind of, um, offset to that is, hmm, actually I think Starkweather and, and Ms. Murphy, I don't know that you were, you are on the commission when we talked about the VMU.
No.
Uh, and that whole, oh, shoot, that's right. So that one, we're working on, on getting that put together and, and, um, finalized for this body to look at. And, um,
That's the last item.
That's the last item. And the other piece that I wanted to, to just share with the commission is we are bringing on another part-time planner and they will be focusing on advanced planning, which is really this list that you're seeing here.
So the, I mean, clarify, title 10 update, that's coming back to us or going to the council?
There are several pieces that will be coming to this body at, at some point in time.
Any way we can, those of us who are new, get a complete picture of what happened? Because that was really hard when we were dealing with that formula business ordinance, not knowing.
No, there, there were, there were several pieces of cleanup of, uh, uh, some of it errata, but some of it just other, other things that were were format changes, if you will.
Low hanging fruit.
To the text of title 10.
Right.
That were all, that were all passed by the planning commission well before you got here. And we're trying to get that into shape to put in front of the city council to say yes or no.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying, I'd like to know more about how that came about and so forth. So that we have a, a bigger understanding because.
Yeah, ask me offline.
When, well, and not only that, but when, when this comes before the commission, again, because title 10 as a cleanup is not done yet. There are still at least three or four iterations that, that need to be addressed.
More policy questions.
And there's more policy questions and, and what we're trying to accomplish, I know you've got a question, it's just burning, I can tell. What we're trying to accomplish is some of that low hanging fruit, the errata that we're talking about. Some of those items are deeper dives. Formula business was never on the radar, but was put on the radar because of situations that arise. That's not necessarily a part of the title 10 stuff. So it, sometimes there's things that veer off of what title 10, the intentions were for it. Uh, and the errata is the first step to that.
The meeting that's coming up at the end of the month, uh, on the general plan? What do we need to do to be prepared for that?
Excellent question. Uh, let's hold off till we get to that. That's, well, there's a slight tweak. It's been adjusted because we found a conflict with another meeting happening that same night. We want to make sure that, oh shoot, I'll just talk about it right now. I can, can't I?
Feel free.
Okay, thank you. Cause it's, it's more of an informational piece for this body as well as those online. The, um, we were originally going to have it, I believe on July 28th, which is the Thursday in between five and seven, 5:30 and 7:30. There's going to be a flyer coming out at the end of this week identifying a shift in that. We're pushing it to the following Tuesday. There was conflicts with, um, other items that are on that same night that were potentially going to draw kind of the interested parties away from the general plan update. We wanted to.
Talking about our thing, we changed because of that.
Wait, what? The Demer, what you're talking about?
Democratic Club was, yeah, we changed ours to the 25th.
Different one. Well, now it's a, that was potentially a third one. So apparently the 28th was extremely popular. So we've pushed that now to, um, to the following Tuesday.
And what time of the day is that?
It's going to still be 5:30 to 7:30.
Okay.
So you'll be seeing a flyer at the end of this week on it.
You're moving it to August 2nd?
Yes. And just to set the table on that, it is, we're, we're going to be heavily involved in getting community input on transportation and land use. And the safety element as well. All three of those are going to be part of it.
So are, are there like background material? I mean, I've looked at the current ones, but I mean, is there some going to be like a series of?
There's staff report on this?
No, no staff report. It, it'll be presentation from the consultant, kind of, kind of helping to set the table for what we're looking to get, um, in terms of feedback from the community.
So he's going to have a report for us in advance?
Not necessarily report in advance.
We'll have something to say.
So we're just going to learn about it as we're there?
Yes. But if you, if you're wanting additional information, I would turn your attention to the, um, the general plan update webpage. So all, that landing page has all of the meetings that we've had up to this point.
Yeah, I've read them all.
Okay, so you've, that's, that's your update.
Okay.
At this point.
I would also suggest that this is the land use and transportation elements of the general plan.
It's the meat and potatoes for sure.
The, those elements are online on the city website now. So the best way to prepare is go read what's there and make your own notes in the margins and come to the meeting ready to talk about that.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that's a good, we, and we did talk about both of those elements, um, before this body. Hmm, six, eight months ago, I would say now at this point.
Look at that meeting.
Yep.
Give us the date on that.
I don't have the exact dates, but I can certainly provide that to this commission. So at least, so at least you've got, um, you're hitting the ground running essentially.
You can, you can find a list of agendas.
I know, I know.
All right. Anything else on that, Lucas?
You know, the parking piece, we keep hearing about that. I don't have.
You are the city council members on that?
Yeah, because it's an ad hoc that's working on it right now.
Ad hoc, there's only two.
City council member told me and I, that, uh, they're moving along and there's going to be something coming.
Okay.
That's.
And that might be one, one where we, we hold tight until we, we hear from council and then go from there. I know, eh, we continue to hear from the community to, to do something or to just let it lie or to loosen the standards, but I think it's better to wait for, for council to kind of give some of that, that direction.
We're going to need a lot of citizen input on that issue because.
Oh, we'll get it.
We hear.
We're already getting it. We're getting spell over from them right now.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Even I'm getting it, you know, I'm not asking, I'm not going out and campaigning, but I'm getting it.
All right. Very good.
All right, I, I think that's it for the items. But just know that we are bringing on a part-time, um, assistant planner and they're, I'm super excited. Cause they're eager to get to.
Is this the annuitant?
Hmm?
No. A retired annuitant?
Nope.
Oh, that's separate.
Me, yep.
Okay.
Now, this is somebody that we're bringing online that's.
Now, isn't the deputy manager they're hiring going to be somehow doing something in the planning area or not?
Mm-mm. Nope.
Okay.
All right. Item seven is future agenda items. What did we say? Uh, oh, the seventh, August 17th is going to be the 214 Bryant.
Right.
Where is August 17th? We're not there yet.
It's not, we're not there.
There. Oh. Okay.
Yeah, so.
Lucas will typically give us a couple of meetings ahead.
I, we try to.
Pending items, yeah.
August 3rd looks very light, but I can promise you there's two or three items that I think are going to be on that agenda. So. Probably two. We try to keep it right around two.
Talk about the general plan update elements that we're going to cover?
Uh, well, that would already have been covered by the, oh, wait, the third is a Wednesday. We'd be, we would be meeting. So it'd be kind of a debrief.
We've got general plan update.
Yep.
Talking about July 20th?
July 20th, yeah. Did you have it in mind to talk about a particular element then?
No, not necessarily. Probably just give you an overview of what you can expect for the meeting on, on the second.
Okay.
So as you recall, the wireless facility was brought before this commission and then continued date specific or date certain to July 20th.
Right.
We've gotten all that information. So we're, we're gearing up for that.
Good.
Gables is, is ready to move forward as a concept review once again, concept review. So you should expect to see that as well. We'll be doing the standard notification for that. We may not put in the paper because I believe we've missed that date, but I think you can expect to see the neighbors come out on this project.
I think so. Is recusal, um, something you do for a concept review?
Are you within 500 feet of?
Certainly am.
Oh, shoot. You would have to recuse, yes.
Even on the concept, okay.
Mm-hmm. But in recusing, you can sit in the audience.
Yes, I, I will.
You can speak as a public citizen.
I will do that too.
So you're.
Proper to speak as a public citizen if you're actually a commissioner?
Yes. It's the way, yeah, it's the way in which.
We follow our leader.
Well, don't, don't necessarily follow your leader, but.
I'm just asking.
I'm planning on it.
You're recusing yourself from discussion and voting.
Correct.
Voting though.
And, and, and that's the tradition of the city, um, to interpret the law this way. And, um, I think that's enough discussion of that issue.
Each city handles a little bit differently. So I'm going to leave it at that. I don't want to get in trouble.
Oh, there is one other thing, I, and I forgot to mention it to these folks here. Everybody is aware of a new development requires potentially more water than, than is freely available. Places like this, places like the development at the bowling alley also require sewer service.
Right.
And nobody at the, at the city at the moment is requiring a will serve letter from the sewer district. And I would, I'd like to see it done. I, I have a, a parochial view of that because I'm on the sanitary district board myself. But if, if people are not told that they need to go talk to the sanitary district when they're doing a new project and then they find out later that they should have, they feel kind of blindsided by it. So.
It's a fair point. Everybody, everybody's focused on water right now.
Right. It's the other end of the water cycle.
On that notion, because I guess I haven't seen it here, but in North Carolina, we had several, uh, we had our community college that did that. They completely recycled their sewer as part of their, um.
They had their own treatment.
They had their own treatment plant on site.
Well, yeah, but it was, it was used, it was somehow recycled and it actually went into the landscaping somehow. I'm not sure how that worked, but.
Right.
There, this one guy had developed the system and I've heard of that kind of thing. So nobody has done that or would that even be allowed?
It's easy to irrigate with gray water. You can't irrigate with black water, but you can treat it and turn it back into clean water.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Some commercial operations do that called pre-processing.
Right.
Okay.
There's no standards at least through our. Yeah, within our regulations at this point, but that's an interesting idea.
Well, yeah, it's.
I would, I would say this, um, in terms of colleges that I've seen and universities, I, I've seen that done.
Yeah.
They, they, they tend to have the area, the land mass for it.
And they have the scientists that are on staff.
They've got, they've got people on staff that are ready and eager.
Yeah.
For sure.
I think it's a great idea, actually.
Yeah. That's it for me.
Okay. That was, that was, that was future agenda items. We have, uh, staff or directors comments. You've just done that. Any, anything from any commissioner? Anything else you'd like to add to the conversation? Before we break up this.
Yes.
Circus.
I got a quick note. Quick note, um, I will be out of town on July 20th. But I'll try to attend virtually, but just FYI.
If we're, if we're going to do an election, we'd like to have an odd number of members here.
If you're out on the 20th, um, Commissioner Trent.
Mm-hmm.
And Commissioner Murphy, you're, you'd be recusing yourself.
That's three of us, I guess.
Yeah, but this, okay, so hold on.
But recusing only for that portion of the.
Right, but not for the rest of it.
And that's a constant, well.
Do we have a quorum?
What, Jamie's not going to be here?
To take action. Ja- Jamie's not located within the city. So we'd only have one individual that would be within the city.
Quorum with you and me and Jamie.
I see.
That is not a legal quorum.
Correct.
Inside the city.
That item.
20th. Well, no, we also have the wireless, oh, wait, the wireless facility would be okay.
Yeah, that would be okay.
Why is that okay?
Cause Commissioner Murphy would be able to vote on that.
Right, but can we even have the agenda item if we don't have a legal quorum? Right, but can we even have the agenda item if we don't have a legal quorum to hear it?
Yep, so I'll be looking into that with the city attorney.
Which one, the concept, you mean?
I think we've got it, yeah, because the concept is not a decision being made. We're providing notification, comments and information being provided, but no decision.
You are doing notification though.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there'll be a crowd here.
Right.
I think it would be useful to look at that legally because it would seem to me since we're not voting the purpose of having two in-town. So the majority of the people there are in town, but since we're not making a decision, it doesn't seem to me.
On that specific item.
I don't know, if we don't, if we don't have a legal quorum, we can't meet. I think that's the legal requirement.
That's, that's the center of the issue and the, I, I don't have an answer for you at this moment, but the city attorney's office will, will study it and come back with an answer.
What may happen, just as a.
It may not be a problem if Commissioner Trent can.
He can get on line and remote.
Exactly, and then, sorry, Lucas.
Well, I was going to say, the, the one, the one thing I'm thinking about is that Gables just gets pushed to the, to August 3rd.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's where we end up landing.
That would be, that would be the fallback if we can't, if we can't get four of us on the dais.
Yeah, so that would just be the solution.
That might be the most elegant solution here, otherwise we'll, we'll study the issue as well as possible rule of necessity applying.
John, just stay in touch and.
I will.
Let us know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think it should be a problem, I'm just going to Hawaii, I mean, there's connection out there, so it should be fine.
Pissed Hawaii.
Oh, jeez.
Hawaii. I'm not, I'm not going to the moon or anything, so it should be all right.
You're not looking for any sympathy here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was thinking about going to Australia, maybe I could do it from there.
There you go.
We're not through with Commissioner's comments.
Yes.
Okay. I went to the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council meeting on June 20th, as did Jeff. And the thing I want to bring back to you was the report that was given by Dave Ward, who's the planning director for the county of Ventura. And he did a, an update on the housing state laws, particularly the Housing Accountability Act, also known as HAA, H-A-A. Anyway, because of the lack of housing, there have been a lot of state actions, obviously trying to increase the pressure on cities to allow more development. A couple of items they pointed out were that adverse public health and safety is the only allowed reason to deny housing now. And you can only judge a project with objective standards as opposed to subjective standards. So our current traffic policies are being looked at to sort of move us, as Luca said earlier, from the LOS standards to miles traveled. And that housing projects cannot be denied using traffic as the reason. So it seems to me that this commission, a meeting or two ago, sent forward a recommendation to city council to consider a traffic study for the South Montgomery Street project. And since we can't utilize a study to deny a project or influence a project, I don't see any point now in doing a traffic study there. It's sort of.
Project was already approved.
It was, it's a waste of time, so there we are.
Can I clarify that a little bit? Since I was the one who made the complaint about this and ready?
I'd be happy to let you explain this. In fact, the next time I get this assignment, I'm going to hand it to you.
Well, the Housing Accountability Act, and my, my original complaint wasn't actually on that, it was really about LOS, Level of Service and VMT, because my feeling was we were, they were stopping all infill affordable housing in the unoccupied areas because supposedly that would increase traffic on Highway 33. But that's the, the level of service issue. And my feeling was, well, wait a minute, if you're building housing that people can live in here, that's keeping people from commuting.
Keeping them away from the Edison.
So it's a good thing. So it turns out though, I didn't know this until then, I read the Housing Accountability Act and so forth, that they have a specific thing that you cannot, like you said, you cannot deny or you can't use traffic if it's a subjective standard. And actually, you can't use any subjective standards.
Right.
On a housing project, which puts in question. Any housing project, yes. Puts in question our design review process, which is completely subjective. Everything in it is subjective. And I would like us to think about maybe to get around that is looking at design guidelines. Because those can be black and white and you can have the director review them and that they meet those standards. We don't have to go through, you know, a lengthy design review, us deciding what the landscaping is going to be and all that kind of stuff. I just think that would be a better approach on that. They also.
If we can find some objective standards for landscaping, my hat's off to you.
Yeah, well, I mean, a little bit of our design standards, they talk about like the buildings, you know, it's got to be Spanish stuff. There can always be a, a request to be an exception from the guidelines if they're going to do something creative. But I think also if every single project has to go through design review, that means they have to hire a landscaper, they have to hire an architect, they have to hire a lawyer. Everything gets, and it makes it more costly, so I just think that would be, so I think this is the pressure that's coming down on us. The county basically nullified all traffic rules related to housing on 33. That's, so that's the key, it's not, it's not traffic other places, it's 30, it was 33, that was the rule. They also though, made, are making an exception for commercial. So if there's, if the site, if the site is already zoned commercial, they were stopping all commercial stuff like on 33, saying that that violated the rule. Now they're going to make an exception for already zoned, and I'm going to push them to make an exception for all commercial. So the Housing Accountability Act doesn't deal with commercial, but I think it, we ought to be looking at that as well. We should be having objective standards when we're dealing with traffic issues. So, yeah, it was a, to me, it was a, a big step forward and it has, clearly has implications for the town.
It does.
And our board.
The highs is, is nothing to be laughing about. It certainly has a lot of progressive approaches. It's been around since, I think it, the early 80s is really when it, I think it started, but it's been, it's had several amendments.
2017 was the big change.
Was the big one, there was a lot of things that happened in 2016 into 2017 that revolved around housing and ADUs and all those different rules and regulations brought down from the state, so.
News first came up.
So I would, I, I have a copy of it, but it'd be useful for all the planning commissioners to get a copy of the guidelines of the Housing Accountability Act.
I think that's, I think absolutely we can pass that around as, as an informational piece. I think that'd be great.
Posted on the city website at least.
Yep, I think we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I, I'd also just note that there was a recent case in the California appellate court regarding whether the Housing Accountability Act applies to single-family residences. And so the line that most cities were, were taking was that it did, but this ruling seems to indicate that it does not. So now that's slightly an open issue and some people will be to continue to monitor going forward.
That was a.
One, one of the appeals courts.
That was a district court case?
Correct. No, I, I believe it's a California appeals court case.
Okay.
So.
Quick question, Commissioner Murphy, can you, did, did they elaborate at all on the specific adverse impact? That you said that was one of the criteria that they use that the development could not cause was specific adverse impact. One of the, one of the things they mentioned is public health, you know, adverse impact to public health or taking water from farms or water from preserved resources, which seems to be pretty broad. So I was just curious if they elaborated any, any on that, considering our water issues.
They, they basically said that the cities had to figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
But is it affordable housing or just, it's affordable housing, we can't deny because of water?
Right.
But, but if that water has a specific adverse impact to public health, then potentially it could?
I think you're probably stretching their interpretation.
I, I, I'm just curious on how it works, so just curious if it's specified.
It's, it's a good, I think it's a good question. The, the reality is, is that unless there is some substantial evidence through, I would say extensive studies, that, that prove without a shadow of a doubt that water is a significant irreversible issue. I, I don't, I mean, because there are state laws that basically identify that, that affordable housing cannot be denied based on, on water availability.
I, I would just add that it would have to be site by site as well. You, you can't just say, oh, the whole valley is, is off limits. I, I think Commissioner Trent, your, your question also was regarding what exactly is specific adverse impact on health and safety? And that, that's kind of an open question, one that is definitely being litigated at the moment. So fortunately or unfortunately, we will have answers regarding what that exactly means relatively soon.
Dribble out over the years.
Yes, there's a.
Courts will decide.
Yes, I, I know this community that has had its own brush with fire and our office represents another client where a project was denied due to wildfire concerns. And the developer there is suing alleging that there were not substantial findings, so.
So they would need, even on health and safety, they'd need objective standards based on the Housing Accountability Act.
Correct, and, and that's all I think we should say tonight regarding this issue. I think, you know, the posting of the Housing Accountability Act guidelines on, on the website will be helpful and our office can also provide memos about this as well, which I think have, we've provided already to the community development director.
That'd be great.
If you've done that on, on the other housing laws, SB 9 and 10 and such, if those are available and could be posted, I think that'd be useful for all of us.
Maybe not posted, but circulated to the, the planning commission.
Okay.
That would be good.
If you'd like.
Because it's, it's attorney work product, you mean?
Right.
Correct, if, right, I think it, if we want to make something public, that has to go through.
If we read all the ones that are being proposed, we'd get complete, our heads would spin.
Right. Our. I will say this, HCD did a pretty good job of taking SB 9 and boiling it down in terms of her process. And we've been using that as a tool, obviously with information that was provided by the city attorney's office as well.
Right, and, and Lucas can correct me whether an SB 9 project has come before the city here, but we've also provided information regarding SB 9 to the city council, including, I think, in a PowerPoint. So that should be in one of the, the minutes and I can eventually track that down also.
They had a debate on it, obviously.
No, there was a heavy debate on it at the end of last year.
I don't want any confidential work product, but anything that's suitable for public release would be good for all of us.
Understood.
Okay, anything else?
One comment, well, announcement. I've already sent it out, but on the 25th, the Ojai Democratic Club is inviting an incredible speaker. Shane Phillips wrote the book, The Affordable City, and he also does a podcast called UCLA Housing Voice. If you get a chance to hear it, it's been going on for about, I think, 18 months, and I've listened to about 10 of them. And he always puts on a, someone who's done research on an issue around housing. So this book basically goes through a whole set of policies, probably half of which don't apply to us because we're too small. But anyway, it is, it's useful as a tool to look at, you know, what are all the possibilities? So I'm hoping this will be, once he gives his speech, be like inviting you all to have, be an open forum. What, what if anything across the state and, you know, across the country and people that are experts in this sort of thing, what might be something that we could use?
Good idea.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other business bef, oh. Oh, ah, Mayor Stix, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you Chair Quilsey, and thank you so much to the commission for all your hard work and dedication. And I know how much work it takes, so really grateful for that, for your, and thank you also for, to Judy and Jeff for stepping up and being of service, so welcome. Thank you staff, Sherry, Lucas, Maura and Epi for all your hard work. And really looking forward to the 17th to hear about the, the Adamson property. And thank you Glenn for doing your homework. And thanks to Mark Whitman and Jeremy also on the Adamson property, Tony Yano. And just sounds really exciting, the, you know, in terms of the themes, agrarian, adaptive reuse, local produce, great community resource, keeping with the rural character, fermentation room for kombucha, I mean, come on. And, you know, that it's been 20 years vacant and we're getting a move on. So, and I really appreciate the, the neighbors, the community concerns, so addressing noise and light and the sightlines and how we here in Ojai work all together to come up with the perfect, well, you know, collaborate for the best solution for all of us. So I just am really grateful and thankful to all of you, so thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, Mayor.
Of course.
All right, there being no other business before the commission at 9:06, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.